Hi, everyone. I am Senator Julia Salazar, Chair of the New York State Senate's Committee on Crime Victims, Crime and Correction. It is now 10:10 a.m. on Wednesday, December 7th, 2022, and this begins a public hearing about two bills which have been referred to the Crime Victims Crime and Correction Committee, S-15A and S-7514, referred to as the Elder Parole Bill and the Fair and Timely Parole Bill, respectively. We have received written testimony from more than 45 individuals and expect to hear oral testimony from at least 20 witnesses today. Those testifying include survivors and victims of crimes, a former New York State Parole Board Commissioner, experts in both civil rights and criminal law, formerly incarcerated individuals who have firsthand experience with New York's system of parole and community supervision, and other witnesses speaking about the importance of these two bills. To understand the subject of our hearing today, these two bills before our committee, it is crucial to know what parole is and what it is not. Parole is ostensibly a mechanism for the state to decide whether or not an individual convicted of a crime with an indeterminate sentence of incarceration should be released from prison into community supervision. The New York State Board of Parole is the sole entity with authority to grant or deny release to eligible individuals incarcerated within New York's Department of Corrections and Community Supervision. If the parole board decides to grant parole to an eligible person, the board also sets the parole conditions, including terms and conditions for which a person's parole could be revoked due to violation. A fully-staffed parole board in New York would consist of 19 parole commissioners or board members, but there are currently only 15 board members on the parole board, as there are four vacancies on the board right now. Data from docs shows that every year, the majority of incarcerated individuals legally eligible for parole are denied parole by the board. The percentage of incarcerated New Yorkers granted release after a parole hearing has declined since before the pandemic, with only about 36% of all interviewed parole candidates granted conditional release by the board in 2021 compared to 40% granted release in 2019. Today, New York State has the third-largest population in the country of people serving terms of life imprisonment. Of all the counties in the state, the highest percentage of individuals serving a life sentence right now in New York are from Brooklyn. The Elder Parole Bill would provide that a person of age 55 or older who has served at least 15 years of a sentence should have an interview with the Board of Parole to determine whether or not they should be released to community supervision. The interview would be scheduled to occur within 60 days of their 55th birthday or the last day of the 15th year of their sentence, whichever date is later for that individual. If release is not granted, the person would have a subsequent parole interview no more than 24 months or two years after their denial. The bill would also require the Board of Parole to report quarterly to the governor, the legislature, and the public about the outcomes of elder parole. Separately, the Fair and Timely Parole Bill, of which I am the Senate sponsor, would direct the parole board to grant discretionary release on parole unless the eligible individual poses a current and unreasonable risk that cannot be mitigated by parole supervision. These factors shall not be the sole basis of the board's decision, and the board would be required to explain in writing the basis for a denial of parole and how risk factors were considered and weighed. I will note that neither of these bills, if they were to become law, would automatically grant release to any individual and would not in any way circumvent the parole process. I normally would turn it to Senator Hoilman, who is the sponsor of the Elder Parole Bill. Senator Hoilman is on his way, so when he arrives and joins the hearing, I will give him an opportunity to speak. But I just want to welcome everyone and also give an opportunity to Senator Palumbo to speak, if you would like, and then Senator Tedesco as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's nice to see you all post-COVID and certainly starting to address our new legislative session coming up. I myself have been working for many years in the area of criminal justice. I have been a former prosecutor for many years. I was in a major crime bureau. I was a supervisor handling rapes, robberies, homicides, and then I've been on the defense side for many years. So I think I'd certainly bring a unique perspective to these bills and analysis of it, and I do look forward to our panelists' testimony. I do have a few comments, just generally, because I believe that some of these bills in conjunction would create a situation where we have, again, a mandate that would ultimately provide opportunities, of course, for certain people, because we all want appropriate justice when it comes to the criminal justice system and prisoners. But however, I mean, for example, today's the anniversary of the Colin Ferguson shooting. He would be eligible for parole if these were to both pass, and it wouldn't be the best interest of society that is the current standard under our parole system. It would be what is best for the individual potential parolee. So I do have some concerns with some of these bills, and I think we're certainly going to have not even necessarily a spirited discussion, but a very intellectual and intelligent discussion on these bills and how, quite possibly, in my opinion, some of them could certainly be modified if they're taken up by the legislature to account for certain very, very serious crimes, because, of course, it's not a perfect system of justice, but we don't have magic wands to bring back people who've been murdered and for rape victims to forget what happened to them. So our system of justice removes people from society. So I think this is a very important -- these are interesting bills, and this is a very important topic to me, so I certainly look forward to the further discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Palumbo. Senator Tedesco?
Thank you. Let me first of all thank the chairwoman for having this hearing, and my colleague, Senator Palumbo, and all of you for taking the time to help us look about and think about and look at legislation which relates to, hopefully, a definition towards moving towards for equal justice for all, whether you're incarcerated, whether you're alleged perpetrator, or whether you're a victim. I want to personally just make a statement about constituents who live in my district here, which is an example of something that seems to be happening holistically as it relates to when someone who was arrested for a violent crime, convicted for a violent crime, some very serious, some lesser to medium, given a sentence and comes up for parole. As you know, the victims who are the families or the victim themselves are given the opportunity to give what's called a victim impact statement. And if some of you here understand the process that goes through for that, what it has come to be, I think very much so, is no longer a victim impact statement, but a victim statement in and of itself. And I'll explain to you why, and the constituents I'm talking about are Michael and Regina Stewart and the Rivers family. Christopher Stewart and Deanna Rivers were students at Schnendehoa High School. They were driving home from a basketball game, and they were killed by a drunk and drugged driver. Irresponsible, of course, was arrested, was convicted, was given a sentence. Every time that individual comes up for parole every two years, Regina and Michael Stewart come before someone who represents the parole board and the commissioners. But you probably understand and know, in most instances, in fact, I think just about in every instances, that individual is not one of the three individuals who are going to interview the perpetrator who is coming before the parole board. That's why I said this has become a victim statement alone and not a victim impact statement, because how could it impact what took place with that interview that's coming up if the three individuals who are part of the parole board and commission don't see that victim impact statement? And when individuals like Regina and Michael make those statements, and you probably know this if you're a victim or you've made some victim impact statements yourself, it brings up a lot of emotions, and it's something that has to be brought up and gone through, the emotional, the psychological impact on the family members who were left behind and the victim themselves. And they're distraught about the fact that every time they come up every two years, the person who is there, very nice usually, listens, consoles them, but they know for the most part that's not the person that's going to be interviewing the individual who perpetrated that crime. We have a bill, and I'll give you the number of that bill. It's S-2846. It's bipartisan. We have Fred Thiel, I think, represents us in the Assembly on that. It's a pretty simple bill. It says when those individuals come before the individual who they're giving that victim impact statement to, they would have the opportunity to require a videotaping of that. And that videotape would be brought to the real individuals who will be interviewing the individual who's up for parole, and they would have to view that. So then they could say to themselves, "Well, we put our hearts on the line, we told the story once again, we let them know the impact on us, it's more closer to a victim impact statement." Of course, there's nothing like those being right in front of them to see the hurt and the horror of what they've gone through. So we think it's a reasonable concept and reasonable bill. It's impossible for these individuals to travel all across the state and go before it. We understand that. But we think it would be a good compromise to allow individuals to say, videotape us, send that out to those individuals who'll be there interviewing the one who's up for parole, and let that be a real victim's impact statement, positive or negative. Because I'm sure some of the individuals come forth and say, "We think that individual served enough time. We think they've paid their dues right now." And others will say, "Well, we still feel there's a need to spend more time in the sentencing process in being an incarcerated individual." So that's something I'd like to have maybe the board and my colleagues actually consider, because if there's going to be a victim impact statement opportunity in the state of New York, I think the victim should have the ability not to just be a victim statement, but to be one that can have an impact and at least let those who are interviewing the parolee see what they have to say. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tedesco. I will also note, as all of the panelists have been made aware, that we have a social worker from my office who is available. Of course, the testimony that we'll hear today, a lot of it is difficult to hear and difficult to give, and we want to make sure that every witness and person in attendance has the support that they need. So please make sure to take advantage of that if you need to. I will go ahead and invite up our first panel. That is Anthony Dixon from the Parole Preparation Project, Alicia Cohen from Newburgh LGBTQ Just want to thank you all for taking the time to testify today. Whenever you're ready to begin, feel free. Oh, feel free to begin, Alicia or Jose. Oh, okay. No, no, it's okay.
Hello, my name is Alicia Khan, and I'm the Director of Careers for Justice at the Newburgh LGBTQ Center. I want to thank this committee today for inviting us to speak at this.
Could she get a little bit closer to the mic? Is it on?
There we go.
Okay. Hi, how are you? My name is Alicia Khan, and I'm the Director of Careers for Justice at the Newburgh LGBTQ Center, and I want to thank the committee here in the hearing today for allowing me to testify. Not only am I advocate within not only in parole justice, but towards any mass incarceration in its entirety. I spent 10 years incarcerated. I was denied by the parole board five different times, five different times for nature of the crime that is property damage. 10 years, 10 years of trauma, 10 years of pain. And when I got arrested, the cops told me if I told the truth, I would not go to prison. That didn't happen. When I saw the judge, the judge told me I'll be out in five years on good behavior. That didn't happen. And when I go into the Department of Corrections, I behave. I repress my own sexuality. I repress my own gender to get by. I was sent to the parole board, and when I was in the parole board, they told me that I'm a horrible person. They told me that I'm a horrible person five different times. It didn't matter about my behavior record. It didn't matter about anything. All that mattered is that they wanted me to serve time, and during that time, I was sexually assaulted. I was raped multiple times during that time. I was beat up. And it was not until I came home that there was people in my community that told me that I am worthy, that gave me a chance, gave me a chance without a college degree, gave me a chance, and now I'm here speaking in front of the Senate hearing, because individuals looked at me and said, like, "Okay, I am worthy." But the state didn't make me feel that way. And today, we have an opportunity for all these testimonies to be heard, and for this bill to be passed, we're not asking for anybody to be -- open up the gates and let everybody out. We're asking people who have multiple college degrees. We're asking people who run programs. We're asking people who have the best behavior record inside the facilities to be released and not judged by the mistake that they made decades ago. I was 17 years old. I'm now 33 years old. I made some big chunk of my life because I kept getting denied, because the state told me that I'm not worthy. The state just said, "Nature of the crime, nature of the crime." It didn't matter the programs. It didn't matter about anything. And so I urge this hearing and I urge all of you senators to vote yes on fair and timely and elder parole. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia.
Members of the Senate, it is an honor to provide testimony to you today on two legislative bills that adhere to the Parole Preparation Project. The Parole Preparation Project provides critical advocacy and direct support to currently and formerly incarcerated people serving long-term sentences, and we work to help assist in the reformation and change of the parole board process. Our work has been chronicled in various publications and contextualized in various documentaries. In the past nine years, our work has been replicated in over five states. As experts in the field, 60% of the participants who we helped to bring home are granted release compared to our overall release rate of 35%. On a personal note, I was incarcerated for 32 years in New York State Prison as Director of Community Engagement at the Parole Preparation Project. I come face-to-face with individuals who are released and have been horrified by the parole board. I'm here to speak on their behalf today. New York is one of the places where the history of parole first began inside the United States. In order to address a crowded prison population, New York implemented a system of indeterminate sentences and conditional release in 1876. That sparked the implementation of parole systems across the nation. Ironically, what started as a solution to overcrowdiness inside of our prison has today become the way in which mass incarceration is occurring for elderly people in the very state that it started. For four decades now, the parole board has stockpiled human lives. Today, as mentioned earlier, one out of every three individuals in New York State Prison is aging, elderly, and likely serving a life sentence, making New York distinguish with a category the third-largest percentage of life is across the nation. We are one of the most punitive states in the nation. Our system has spiraled into a tailspin that is unsustainable, both financially and structurally. Furthermore, data has shown the pervasiveness of structural racism in New York State prison system. As I said here today, I am reminded that every three days, a person dies in New York State prisons. Our solution to this crisis is the Elder Bill. Among other things, the merit of our criteria for 55 is borne out by doc's public records showing that individuals, on average, die at 57 years old. The Elder Bill is a data-driven solution to the crisis of the aging prison population in New York State. Its passing will improve public safety, reduce correctional costs, and immediately free up funds that can be redirected to community support service to assist individuals upon Lastly, the second bill we propose in support is the Fair and Timely Bill. Each year, the parole board sees over 10,000 individuals, despite the fact that these individuals have stellar institutional record, a diversity of skill sets because they've been in there so long. Concrete release plans. They have low-compass risk scores for violence and rearrest. The parole board denies 60% of those who appear before them. On its face, this 60% denial rate is indictment that either DOC or the board is transparently off course. The records show that it's on the board. I believe that everybody that comes into prison is able to change. As a person that has been incarcerated, I have seen individuals change. I ask this honorable board of senators today that are here to hear these two bills, that they believe in redemption and that humans are not their worst mistake. I yield the floor for you and tell you today that we are asking that you amend the executive law or end it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll say whenever you're ready.
I submitted a written testimony in briefly detailing my accomplishments during 38 years of incarceration and what I've been doing in the close to five years that I've been released. I ask that you refer to it. I don't have the time to go into the details here. And refer to it in light of what I'm saying. I did not get to this point in my life from harming people, being convicted of a very violent crime, to who I am today on my own, embarrassed, by myself, in a vacuum. I had tremendous help, help from people who cared. Sadly, some of these people who cared about my life had passed away. They never had the opportunity to step out that gate into the free world. Others are still languishing in prison. They may very well die. I know their worth, and I represent their worth, and literally dozens of people who have been impacted by them also represent their worth. And I suppose the same could be said about women in our prison system. They have actually helped an entire generation transform their lives. This, to me, is a measure of who they are, and it's a measure of how they should be measured, how they should be valued. If we believe that human beings can change to that degree, where they can influence an entire generation, then we are compelled to give them a second chance, no matter what the crime or conviction was, no matter what the length of time that they received. And sadly, we're talking about black and brown men and women who will die in our prison system, who are more deserving than me, who have more potential than me, and this is why I am here before you all. If you don't know these men and women, then I urge you to get to know them, and perhaps you may have a different perspective. We created programs, therapeutic programs, for decades to help us develop insight into the harm that we cause. And equally important is what we can do to stop that cycle of harm, that cycle of interpersonal violence in our communities. No one else is doing that. No one else even came close to creating such programs. You have to value a human being that does this for decades and do it knowing there's no rewards. Some of the men I'm talking about will die in prison, for sure. Do it for no reward. How many people do you know like that? Do a job like that without compensation? Are you?
Thank you. I'll go ahead and start with some questions before passing it to my colleagues. This is for any of you who would like to answer. I'm wondering if people who have served long sentences, and I realize that's relative, but tend to give up hope when they receive parole denials or see others denied parole, and what impact that may have that you've seen on life inside facilities?
So over the past six years that I've been home, I've worked face-to-face with individuals that have experienced the exact thing that had happened at my own parole hearing in 2016. A dear friend of mine by the name of John McKenzie committed suicide after he was denied parole release after his 10th time. He was in his 70s. He was in for over 40 years, and he was repeatedly denied parole. I walked home when I was finally released, and I walked around my block thinking about how John should have been released. When I left there, I knew he should have been released. He mentored me. I know another individual that was at the parole board that had given up hope on the parole board, and we begged him to go. He was denied so many times, he had resigned to die in prison. Finally, he did go, and when the board gave an indication that they was going to release him, he asked to use the restroom. He went to the restroom to garner up his strength, what he was hurt. He was suffering from cognitive dissonance. He had set his mind that he would die in prison, that he was just there to go through the motion. And he was just trying to compose himself to go back out there. He caught a stroke, and he died late on that night. Just recently, last week, I brought home a man who had did 48 years, almost half a century, in New York State prisons. We're pulling off more time in this state than any place in the nation. 48 years. He had refused to go to the parole board for 17 years because they had already hit him, and he was making a claim of innocent. him, and he was making a claim of innocent. I brought this individual home with some of my colleagues in a wheelchair. His name is Pete Rivera. Senator, we should not let anybody come home in that condition. His remaining family is horrified that he could have came home much earlier and come home as an asset rather than dependent on community resources and the remaining family. We equipped him. We spent taxpayers' money to rehabilitate, quote-unquote, these individuals. But yet, we refuse to get the dividends at the end. And we'd rather they die or let them out when they are seriously ill, wheelchair-bound. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to ask, actually, a question about your testimony, Mr. Dixon. You had mentioned resources for post-release. Could you speak, as well as your fellow panelists, to your experience with any resources that were or were not offered to you after you were released on parole? And the nature, whether or not they were adequate?
Right. I'm sorry, can you repeat that in another way?
Yeah. So, resources that were made available to you, if any, after you were released on parole, and just sort of evaluating what that support gave you, if anything, and what recommendations you would make in terms of resources offered to people after they are paroled?
Right. Thank you for that. It's an excellent question. I would start by saying that individuals that are denied parole, just recently, they are providing some type of counseling in some facilities after they are denied because they saw individuals' state of mind afterwards. So that was a resource even prior to release. After release, one out of every three to one out of every four individuals that I've saw, including myself, we come home without a valid identification. That would be the social security card and the birth certificate. It didn't make sense to me that after three decades, DOC did not have that on record. And that means that individuals are impeded from making a successful transformation. They cannot open up a bank account, cash or check, go into certain buildings. For all intensive purpose, they have an immigrant status. Other resources that was not available to me was any cash flow. $40 was nothing. After being in docs for 32 years and no retirement plan, I had to start up. I think that the resumes are antiquated, the cover letters as well. I think that the department is not allowing individuals to get certified while they're in with license as electrician. They can do it in there for 20, 30, 40 years to uphold the maintenance in the prison. But when they get home, they have no real credentials, although they've been doing it. They could get that whilst they are in there. And what DOC has done has really used some of the programs as twinkies. They say, here, they do got some type of credentials when they leave. It may be only three out of 30 programs that have that. I think that we can do better than that by putting people on a track to get licensed and certified while they're in there, so that when they get home, they can get on a pathway for sustainable employment.
Thank you. Is there more that either Jose or Alicia would like to add about your experience or resources that you think would be helpful?
I think that when I came home, I was sent to a motel that was known for sex work and drug use. I'm a recovering heroin addict, now almost six years clean. But coming out of prison, I wasn't. And I was forced with the decision to get clean, and I got clean, and I'm very proud that I got clean. But I crawled my way through reentry. I was placed in a motel, and I was told I need to find housing, or else I would have to go to a male's parole house, because I identify as a transgender woman, and there are no services. I'm upstate, a lot less services, which are, you know, compared to New York City and other large cities. There's not resources for career people, there's not resources for reentry. I was given that $40, $40 and a change of clothes. I couldn't find a job right away, and I didn't get approved for any type of government services, any type like that, for at least two months after I got out. And unfortunately, I had to do sex work while on parole, just to make ends meet, just to feed myself, just to clothe myself, just to make enough money to move into a foreclosed house, to have to pay my landlord money on top of sexual favors, just to be in the house. And there was a run room, no heat house. Resources that go to people who come home are necessary. Because of one thing that prison does, prison teaches folks how to survive. It teaches us how to live. It teaches us how to be independent. It teaches us how to deal with the worst of the worst and survive and move forward and turn amazing things into not coming in without a high school diploma and having a college degree by the time you leave. It turns into, and those same resources can be put outside. We have all this money that goes for college programs on the inside, for all these programs that go on the inside. And yeah, they're doing great work, but as soon as you come out, you're saying, okay, here you go, your life to your own. No knowledge on how to get an ID, no knowledge on social security card, birth certificate, everything that I needed to get a job. And I applied everywhere, and I kept getting denied, and I kept getting denied for the simple fact that I had felony conviction. And so despite, after doing the 10 years and being let out of my conditional release date, not even parole, I was not given the adequate resources, and I had to crawl through reentry. And so, as far as services, housing, job security, there's plenty of trainings that go on in prison. I've mastered the skill floor covering. I can lay your tiles, I can do your carpet and everything like that, and I don't like handiwork, so I probably won't. But it's like, really, it's we're having access to these important factors of actually providing successful reentry. If we're going to be in prison and we say we rehabilitate folks, then give folks a chance when they come out, allow folks to be re-entered into society and not have to go through the hardships of going aware parole, where the state puts me, a place that's known for sex work and high active drug use.
Thank you, Alicia. Is there anything you wanted to add on this question, Jose?
Yes, there is. There is one thing that I would like to touch on, you know, with the fair and timely parole. Commissioners today admit they got it wrong, with me and many others, that they have denied parole four, five, six, 10, 14 times. And when they see what we're doing in our communities, they admit that they got it wrong, that we should have been released a long time ago. Because in the five years that I've been out, and I can say this for my colleagues that are out doing the same thing, not a single day in the five years that I've been out have I been a threat to public safety. Not a single day. And every day, I enhance community safety. So when we're denied parole based on a determination that we pose a continuous threat to public safety, and that sticks for years and decades, and then they have to admit that they were wrong, no accountability, they shrug it off. That's why the fair and timely is important. Because people have to be, people appearing before the parole board, the extraordinary accomplishments that is being presented as evidence can't be ignored. It just can't be ignored. It has to be a part of the decision-making process. It has to be an important part of the decision-making. Because people don't languish in prison for 35 years, getting every degree they possibly can, creating the most effective therapeutic programs, faking. People don't risk their lives stopping riots in prison yards, gyms, faking. That has to count for something. And today's parole board can dismiss it like it's worthless. Fair and timely parole bill will bring us back to the point where rehabilitative accomplishments, they don't have to be extraordinary, because as a teacher's assistant, a person who takes seven years to get a GED, that is an extraordinary accomplishment for that person, and it should be valued that way. The point is, the fair and timely will bring us back to the point where people's efforts to not only transform their life but to redeem themselves have value.
Thank you. One more question for now for this panel, but want to ask after that, if possible, for us to stop the clock to allow Senator Hoilman, who's joined us, to give remarks. But I'll just quickly ask all of you, for each of you, were you presented to the parole board in person or via a video conference when each of you went up for parole?
I've done both.
You did both? Yeah.
Yeah. Mine was in person, and I believe it made a difference.
Yeah, mine was both in person for the beginning, but the last two was on virtual.
Got it. And what impact would you say, each of you, any of you, what impact was there having parole hearings on video? I know, Anthony, you didn't experience that. But for Jose and Alicia, could you see the commissioners when you had a video hearing? Did you know who was speaking when they were speaking? What was the impact of video versus in person?
When you're in person, you see the three commissioners, and you're speaking to three people. When you have a conference, the only person you see is the one that's speaking to you. And if the other two are not engaged, you don't even know who they are. You don't even know that there's two or three in the room unless they identify themselves. And I just think, being able to just look at a human being and see the human expressions that we can address. You know, if I see a frown on your, if I'm talking about something and I see a frown on your face, I say, well, I gotta say something to take that frown away. You know, I gotta get this person engaged. You know, and the video doesn't allow for any of that. It becomes so mechanical that, and then when I was appearing before the parole boards that denied me, they only lasted eight minutes. And I'll say that the parole board that granted me parole lasted a lot longer than eight minutes, almost three times that. And the commissioner who released me is right here with us.
Thank you. Alicia, do you have any thoughts about video versus in person?
I think when it was done in virtual, it was impersonal. Like Jose said, like, you don't get to see the person unless the person is talking or they're engaged. When actually having it, you know, in person, you can actually, like, see body, you know, body movements, and you can see if they're engaged, and you can appeal towards, like, you know, what your accomplishments have been towards prison, whereas virtual is very limited. I think they give us less than three minutes to actually, you know, put our lives on the line and explain why we should be released. And even virtual, it's even shorter. It's very quick, very next person, in and out, which is not, yeah, in both, more so in virtual than in person.
Thank you. I'll hand it over to Senator Hoilman, if you'd like to give opening remarks or ask any questions.
Thank you, Senator Salazar. So glad to be here, State Senator Brad Hoilman. I am the sponsor of one of the bills we're discussing today, the Elder Parole Bill, as it's known, S15A. And I just wanted to thank you three for testifying, and Senator Salazar for organizing this and her team. The Elder Parole Bill that I carry with Assemblymember DeVilla would, I think, as we've discussed, help remedy the long and ineffective sentences by guaranteeing a parole hearing for those 55 years and older that have served at least 15 years. It's a guarantee of a hearing. It is not a guarantee of parole, as you all well know. And of course, Senator Salazar's fair and timely bill is crucial, too. You know, one of the things I will be talking about later today is how both of these bills could actually save the state millions. The estimate is $522 million per year. And to put that into perspective by uplifting what United Neighborhood Houses noted in their written testimony, which we've received, $522 million is greater than the entire budget of the New York City Department for the Aging, the entire budget, which supports hundreds of thousands of older New Yorkers through contracted services such as over 300 senior centers, home-delivered meals, and case management. And I think you'd agree that that's a pretty staggering comparison. Just think what we could be doing to serve older New Yorkers instead of keeping them behind bars. We could instead be spending on programs for incarcerated New Yorkers to help set them up for success after their sentences, just to take one example. But this is certainly a view have described more than just about the state's bottom line. The need for elder parole is higher than ever. In January, the State Controller released a report that found that although our overall prison population is declining, the percentage of New York's older prison population has doubled since 2008 and tripled for the 60-plus-year-old population. In that report, the Controller stated, quote, "Policymakers should examine opportunities to reduce the population of incarcerated individuals 50 and over where public safety would not be compromised." And that's exactly what we're attempting to do here today. The solution lies in promoting hope and healing and accountability to stop cycles of violence and support victims and survivors. And we think the solution lies in parole justice. So, as I'm sure some of our colleagues have echoed throughout our campaign for these bills, we have a crisis of death in prison, as Columbia University in a recent study has shown. And again, I'd be interested, as I turn to you, a 504% increase in deaths behind bars of people aged 55 and older since the 1980s, and 56% of deaths behind bars in the last decade were of older people. And it's just unacceptable. So, I want to ask you, on that note, your experiences in your friends and colleagues that were, who were incarcerated, and their aging experience. Can you share any observations that you might have about, in fact, how the studies have shown you do age more rapidly when incarcerated? Like, what does that mean to your body and your physical well-being, Jose?
It's, you have to really live that experience to essentially understand, not the individual experience, but how it impacts other people. There came a point, even before I started appearing before a parole board, when I was preparing for my first parole board, I'm just turning 60 then. People around me were dying. And the cause of death was always listed as cardiac arrest. 57, 58, 59, cardiac arrest. People who looked like they were in relatively good shape, they were just dying. And at that point, I thought that I may very well be next. And as I started appearing before parole boards and being denied... And as I started appearing before parole boards and being denied, I said, yeah, I'm in that next category. It, you know, you, you tend to lose hope that you will get out of prison. And as the years go by with no hope, it weighs heavy on you. I've seen, I've seen people don't want to do anything, they just want to stay in their cell. People hang up, cut up. And it's not just the medical, the lack of adequate medical, because that's historic. In prisons, we have never gotten adequate medical care. The same could be said in our society. In the black and brown communities, COVID exposed the disparity in the deaths. 75% of the people come from poor communities, died of COVID. So it's the same thing in prison, but it's worse. It's not just adequate, it's almost non-existent in some cases. Or you don't get diagnosed in time to get some type of treatment. The food contributes, but nothing contributes like the separation from family, from children. That is the one factor that really weighs heavy. And I would suppose that for a mother to not know where her children are is probably worse. I know I've lost endlessly worried about my four children, especially my two girls. And then when you realize that this is by design, this is by, this, you know, prisons are putting boondocks, Clinton, by designs, knowing that people who are going to be incarcerated there, for the most part, are from New York City. And then we don't, you know, we don't want to get into the conditions of, the administrative conditions. But even today, the more repressive, more repressive conditions for those who are incarcerated, where I'm, I'm, I'm just 120% convinced that in New York State Prison that I did time in, it is by design to cause permanent family separation. And once that hits you, hope is gone.
Thank you. Any thoughts, Anthony? I'm interested in the, that mental and emotional stress that you describe. Also, when you're released, I'm also curious to know, like, your, your state of health upon release and how long it took you to feel like you were recovered? Or, or have you carried forward health effects since your incarceration?
Right. To continue that line of questioning and answering, there's a New York-focused study that was conducted by Ellen Patterson, a doctor, on this. She found out that each additional year in a New York State Prison produced a 15% increase in the odds of death, which translated to a two-year decline in life expectancy for each year that a person was in a New York prison. That means that a person that comes in with a life expectancy of 70 to 72 years of age, it cuts down, based on empirical evidence of the mortality reports that we have, it cuts down to around 57 years. Also, a seasoned veteran that has been around for over 40 years inside of the system, Acting Commissioner of Docs, have said before this committee that individuals in prison age in dog years. It is a profound disconnect to be a policymaker and not know what is happening inside New York State Prison and aging. It is a fact that we must come to grips with. In fact, I would encourage you not only to visit these prisons, but to go to their cemeteries. I myself have been to their cemeteries. Recently, I was at a grave site at Eastern Correctional Facility of an individual I did time, when he did almost 50 years in prison. His name was Robert Green. That individual, only hope was the passing of this bill, the Elder Bill, as is countless other individuals. I was also at the grave site of individuals that have died over the last two years. I saw fresh grave sites, fresh dirt at many of them. I would encourage you to make rounds inside of these cemeteries, to see the dates on them, the numbers on them, and when they died, when they entered, how old they were. The come and connection that this is a real life and death issue in New York State prisons. Men are not only terrified at the parole board, they are terrified because they sense that if nothing is done, they will die in prison. In my own personal transition, I never paid an ED. I'm still in transition. I will forever be in transition, probably. Being in prison is made comparable to veterans in war. I think it's compounded much, much more severe than that. And so at the parole preparation project, we have created a group we call Survivors of the System, a support group. Much like veterans and people in AA have a support group, we now have one. And we're able to discuss things that we cannot discuss with other people, because they do not know what's happening with us. We never feel that we're really a part of the system. We feel that we're still during time, that our crimes will perpetually come up. Not only did it happen at sentencing, it happens at parole, then it happens again at housing, then it happens again at jobs, then it happened again with credit. Perpetually, our worst few minutes in life is used to define us forever at every level of society.
Thank you. And Alicia, in terms of what you experienced and your, your physical health and, and mental and emotional upon release, any description you can share with us as to the length of time it took you to feel like yourself before you were incarcerated?
To piggyback what Anthony says, you never feel a part of. There's no amount of years, there's no amount of time that can go by to being fully a part of society. I'm diagnosed with post-traumatic non-epileptic seizure disorder due from trauma. I just had a seizure this, last weekend. And that is due from prison. I was diagnosed from a psychiatrist that this is what happens, because there's no amount of medication that can control my epileptic seizures, it's surrounded by the past traumas that I have, and that prevents me from driving to this current day. There's an international study that says that one of every three people will develop an epileptic seizure disorder while in prison. There's commonalities between the military and prison, like Anthony was talking about, of how that is connected into epileptic disorder. And having a seizure, quite frankly, it sucks. And it's all surrounded by trauma, and it's surrounded when particular things come up, when particular trauma-induced things, or a memory comes up, or a situation, because I always don't get to say when my trauma is going to confront me. It could be a sound, it could be walking down the street, it could be just simply going to the grocery store and my trauma hitting, and then I'll have a seizure that following day. And so as far as my current state, you know, I do my best to maintain my epileptic disorder, but what ends up happening, it's because of prison that causes this. So there's not a medical treatment, there's not, every test was ran, it is, I have to live with this for the rest of my life. And I was diagnosed with epilepsy at the age of 21 while I was incarcerated. And they did nothing for me but give me medication. That was not good for me. So as far as my current health, good, but then also it's bad.
And then if I could just ask another line of questions. In terms of parole hearings and the incentive that they create for an individual who is incarcerated, does it, does the potential of a parole hearing change your behavior while incarcerated? Does, does that opportunity to speak before a parole board make you think differently when you're incarcerated? Does it lead to, does it lead to behavior that, you know, we might consider to be more conforming with the expectations of, of those who are incarcerated? Is it a positive for, for the safety and the, behind the bars if, if someone has a parole hearing coming up? Like, what, what does that mean for an individual who's incarcerated? Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, for the most part, most, most people serving a life sentence with, that is parole eligible, they look forward to that day. In fact, I don't really know anybody who doesn't look forward to that day, because that's the day that they can possibly leave prison. But when the parole board's release rate was 4%, it wasn't too much of an incentive. People were saying, well, maybe this goes in cycles, maybe the release rate will increase by the time I go before the parole board. But as the parole board rate of release stood, stabilized in the 30s, mid 30s, that's not much of an incentive to do anything for most people. For others who, who this is their only hope, you know, you have to try to convince parole commissioners that you should be released, even though you know that if you appear before a commissioners, a panel of commissioners who have a reputation for not releasing anybody, some people will actually look for excuses to postpone that hearing. I personally wouldn't do that. You know, I will go before whatever board I'm scheduled to appear before. But I think that we shouldn't, the parole board, that process should be something that people look forward to, not only look forward to, but prepare theyself to appear before a parole board, and prepare theyself that this is the only way that I'm going to return to my family. So I have to convince these commissioners, and I have to start early, not two, three years before I go to a parole board. And we, this is what we teach outside of the Department of Corrections. We teach that a person, as soon as they come in, start doing that 25 to life, start preparing today. So we're the ones that give people the encouragement and the incentives to be the best person they are when they appear before the parole board.
Anthony, so would you agree that it is a positive incentive?
I.
The possibility, and the flip side of that, how discouraging is it not to have the chance? And how does that affect behavior?
I really concur with what Jose had said, that I don't know nobody who does not look forward to that day. The fact of the matter is after that day, how they feel, that the nature of their crime is what is stopping them, something that they cannot change, something that a presiding judge already sentenced them for, is now I'm being brought up again, is as if the parole board is offering something it does not intend to give, being that they're going to deny you based on the nature of your crime repeatedly. So for many of these individuals, I go back to what Senator, the question that Senator Salazar had, had mentioned, that it's a sense of hopelessness for many people after their first denial. And me myself, when I was denied my first time, all right, I took it. My second time, I was upset, I was angry. When I came home, I said, this just has to stop. It isn't a matter if we change, it's a matter how much of their anger they take out on you over something that the sentencing guidelines already measured out to you. And it's, so in that sense, it's a sense of hopelessness that is growing in New York State Prison with individuals for years, and their family are hurting. I would also say that there's a temperament, it seems, to right wrongs on what happened in the 80s and 90s, the excessive sentencing. These two bills are a backdoor fix, I mean, a backdoor fix to a front door problem. We have a criterion executive law that says that the parole board must consider a person's age at the time of the offense, but we have nothing to push those individuals to the parole board to be examined today if we do not pass this bill, the Elder Bill. Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and give it to Senator Tadisco for his questions, and then to Senator Palumbo if you have questions.
Thank you very much, Chair. First of all, thank you for your testimony. And let me say, what you've illustrated is all three of you are very bright, very intelligent, and very articulate. You're able to communicate. One time I was sitting with Mario Cuomo, and we were talking about a program he did with me, to put the pictures of missing children on throughway toll tickets. And he said, we're going to have a press conference on that. I said, why? He said, because if a politician doesn't blow his own horn, there's never any music. The question I want to ask you, as I say, you're bright, intelligent, and great communicators. I don't think all those who go before the board have your skills, and I think you'd agree with me on that. What I want to ask you is what preparation, what assistance, what guidance were you given before you went before the parole boards? One time, two times, several times? Were you given any guidance or assistance to help you blow your own horn? Because that's what you had to do, you had to make your case. You're talking about your case right here, very compelling about why you got parole. Was there any assistance to you? Is there a need to provide guidance and assistance before individuals go before a parole board?
Let me, let me answer that question there. A person could be sentenced to 25 years to life. And during that 25 years that he served me, or she, they are not required to confront the offense, the harm, not required to develop insight into the impact of this harm on families and communities. Don't have to give this a second thought, not a second thought. And will appear before the parole board, and for the first time in 25 years, someone asks them, tell me, what was on your mind? Why did you do this? But we create the programs to guide us into taking responsibility. It's not a question of my bad, or excuse me, pardon me. To take full responsibility requires action. To develop insight into harm requires action, and we have to do something to make it right, something. So when we develop these programs, this is what helped us when we appeared before the parole board. But if you appear before the wrong parole commission, it means nothing. So if you don't have it, you're double doomed. So this is the process that what has helped us is each other. Coming times, see, because the thing is that we have families that have also been harmed by crime, serious crime. Serious crime. And we have to address that. We have to live with that because we love family. We have daughters, we got mothers, we got, you know, we got families that have been harmed. So we have to understand that too. And understand that from their perspective. So we bring all this experience before the parole board only to be denied over and over and over like we are not connected. Because like Anthony said, the decision is based on one thing. Crime or conviction and the determination that we are a risk to public safety is based on that crime exclusively. Not on the degrees. Degrees have nothing to do with public risks according to their perspective. So to answer your question, we prepare ourselves. If we don't do it, it doesn't get done.
Well, let me see. Every two years, we prepare ourselves too. But my staff says to me, you remember you did this and you did that and you did this. You have to tell the public you did all that, the positive accomplishments. And sometimes your memory doesn't compel you to remember all those good things you've done. What I'm asking, does anybody sit down and you were in this program? You helped this individual. You did that. Remember to tell that parole board. None of that happens. You just are waiting and you go before those three individuals. Nobody helps tell you, you did some pretty good things and you behaved in a way that showed that you should be out there in public again. There's no assistance like that whatsoever.
We don't have assistance for the Department of Corrections. None whatsoever.
Maybe we should.
So perfectly sound questioning. At this point, I'm thinking about how individuals go before a grand jury. They are prepped when they go at trial as a witness or whatever, they are prepped. And when they go before the parole board 25 years later, there's no preparation. Hence, the parole preparation project sought to fill that void and has replicated itself and over 50, 15 times over the nation over the course of its existence, almost 10 years now. It is needed. But I've saw individuals with massive polemic skills and everything. Go before a parole board. Stellar presentation. I read these transcripts, nothing was wrong. And what Jose have said is sound as well. It's who is at that parole board. I believe that our parole system has a two-pronged approach at this point. They should be able to evaluate the record. They have accomplished risk assessment 85% of the time. The individuals we're talking about have a very low risk assessment of recidivating, of returning to crime. That's a robot that DOC has that is constantly departing from. It's also they can look at a person disciplinary record. It's very difficult for me to go a year without getting a ticket. But we have individuals inside, not institutionalized, but just stay away from trouble. It's very difficult to be on the watchful eye of officers, 300 of them inside of a population that's 30 people. And that rotation of offices not to catch a person slip up. The institutional report. We also have a program vocational instructors that write evaluations every three to four months on individuals in five different categories that the parole board commissioners have the privilege of assessing. So I believe all of that is there for them to assess. The problem that we're seeing is that they minimize everything that we have done and who we are and judge us on one act in our entire life. And we teach individuals to be optimistic about life and we preach that the worst thing does not define you. But when we get before the parole board, there and moving forward, we're always looked at in that one measure of time on who we are. As if we're not dynamic, but stagnant. Therein is the problem. Gentlemen, we are at a point that New York parole system must, must be fixed. We did not call for this. Two decades of parole board abuse and oppression of horrifying people and their family inside have called for this. And it's incumbent upon you to fix this. You are our first and last line of defense. And this must be done immediately because more people will die if it does not be amended at this point.
So what I hear you saying, if they have such a vision of just the action that took place. All this talk about rehabilitation is for naught. Because that's what I think we want. We want people to be rehabilitated. And when they are, they should leave prison.
Yeah, yeah. If, well, one of the guys that I really embraced, Fareed, who was one of the co-founders for the Release Agent People in Prison Campaign before my colleague here had took the helm. He had a famous saying, if the risk is low, let them go. He was simply trying to say, go by the compass because more times than none, 85% of the chance, the robot is right. And so you're going to hear today from one of the people that used to be on the parole board, a former commissioner. And I'm pretty sure she's going to lay it out as to what her duty was and how that plays out for you. But from our side, it matters little about our preparation most of the time. As my colleague Jose had mentioned, it's who is at that parole board that makes the world of difference for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nice to see you all and I do certainly thank you for your testimony. I'll try and be lean and mean because I see we're over time. And I don't know if any of you heard my opening statement that I've been a practicing lawyer now for 24 years. And I've sat at both tables, you know, as a prosecutor. And I think it's almost a misnomer when you're even on the government side that people take pride, you know, in sending people away for long periods of time, particularly in homicide. And that's not true. At least in my case, it wasn't. One family's lost, someone is gone forever, someone's going away for a long time. So there needs to be that element of compassion. And a lot of what you're saying sounds like, I understand that, you know, the prison system itself, we've got malnutrition, we've got those issues, that people need to pay a debt to society. That's the way, coming from a law enforcement family and seeing, you know, when people commit crimes, violent crimes particularly, they need to pay their debt to society. But we need to work on the way that we can get them back out. And with this bill, as I mentioned even in my opening statement, and both of these bills in conjunction are create, I think, create a certain, you know, situation that makes no exceptions. So primarily, my question is to you folks, and I really would like to hear your input, on whether or not there should be any exceptions. And as I mentioned today, it's the anniversary of the Colin Ferguson shooting. You know, that was an awful situation. That was, you know, multiple, it's a serial murder. In my opinion, I don't think that Mr. Ferguson, based on his crime, and I know regardless of what he's done to rehabilitate himself, I don't think he deserves to be back into society. And there were some other individuals as well who became eligible. Richard Angelo, these are Long Island cases, by the way, I'm from Long Island. So, you know, he was the nurse in seven months, poisoned 35 people, killed, I think, 10 of them. He's 60 years old. That's someone who unfortunately, that is too severe in order to get to that point where, like you folks who are now productive members of society, who have, as I said, very compelling stories. But I just want to ask how you reconcile this. This is kind of one big question, so I'll only have to ask one question. But as far as that recidivism rate of prisoners released in 24 states from 2008, this is a study by the Department of Justice. And they did a 10-year follow-up. So it's between 2008 and 2018. So pre-COVID, so we've just got straight numbers. And 82% of inmates released from state prison re-offended at least once during that 10 years. 56% of former inmates aged 55 to 64, at the time of their release, so this is right within the wheelhouse of this bill, at the time of their release in the next 10 years, 56% of them re-infended. So if you could couple that, I know it's kind of a long question, but it's primarily those two questions. How do we reconcile those numbers with these bills? And quite frankly, do you think there should be any exceptions with respect to particularly heinous types of crime?
I think that plainly it's the individuals that are accused and sentenced for what we may consider heinous crimes is not what we're advocating for. What we're advocating for is for the individuals who have that opportunity to go to the parole board and show the work that they have done. The individuals that are not ready to come home won't have done the work. The people that do the work, the three of us here, we're just a small number of individuals who are on the inside. I am clean off of heroin. I am sitting here because of folks on the inside because those elders that were on the inside took me in and said, listen, this is how you survive. And then when I got out, was supporting me from inside of the walls, of supporting me and telling me, you know, and moving me forward and giving me words of encouragement. You can do this, Alicia, you can do the thing. And being able to sit here on the panel. Jose and Anthony, I've heard about them while I was incarcerated. Never was incarcerated, but heard about them, and amazing work that they do. And that's who we're asking to let out. That only represents a small portion of population of individuals who may have done heinous crimes. And we're not asking for that. And we're not asking, and if a person is recommitting a crime and everything like that, that's up for the court system to decide. The only thing that we are asking, it's up for the parole commissioners to stop using nature of the crime and actually take the institutional record, actually take that vocational training, the college, the programs, all the things that has made them into this transformative process and given them a chance to be released. Because if the individuals that were actually doing the work, I can give you tons of names right now, the individuals who are actually doing work or released today, those numbers will look extremely different. This is the parole board and who you go in front of and how biased the parole board is against certain individuals. And it doesn't, and they keep referring back to exactly what you're doing, is referring back to the nature of the crime. Yes, that is a horrible thing that happened. That is extremely horrible and, you know, and I feel sorry for the families. And but the reality is, is that that's not who we're asking for to get released. What's that person's institutional record? Like that's the questions that we are asking. And so it's not whether, should there be an exception? It should be that everybody is deserving of redemption. And that people that are ready to change will change and they will move into and they will start participating. And they will get under the wing of some of these elders around here that just like move forward and bring us through that why they started sitting inside prison. So it's not about these little, small percentage of crimes that are representative of New York State because the majority of the New York State prison population are linked to crimes of poverty. They are not linked to these heinous crimes, to serial killers, to all the things. They are linked to crimes of poverty because that's the way that the state has set individuals up. That's the way that the state sets up trans people. One in three trans people are incarcerated, will experience the criminal justice system before they pass away. The life expectancy of a trans woman is 33. I'm 33 right now. And that's what we're asking for. We are asking for to let individuals live, to let individuals, to not be, continue to be persecuted on this, by the state by one simple mistake just because of who the individuals are. And we're asking the individuals that have transformed is to be out. To have people that don't come out of prison in a wheelchair. One of my mentors, Mr. Tate, was incarcerated for over 50 years. He was released after his, I believe, 12th parole board and died a year later at the age of 62. After being incarcerated for almost 50 years. And so that's, the question is not about these individual cases. The question is this about what is the individual doing on their transformative level?
And just to interject, do you think that there should be any weight afforded to the original crime? Because of course, when you come up for parole, the victim has to relive that as well. And I'm just talking about that balance is my only question. Do you think it should be afforded any weight or a certain percentage of weight? Just to try and work through the mechanics of how it would work.
It's not about whether it's nature of the crime, it's whether they have transformed. It's whether they have given a fair chance at the parole hearing. They already got sentenced by the judge. The judge already sentenced me. The judge sentenced me, I did my time in prison, I completed parole. That's what happens in our judicial process. And so we're not talking about like resentencing the individual. Because that's what you're asking is about, is should we resentence the individual? No, the court decides that. The parole is strictly there to see if the person has transformed from that particular incident and the parole board continuously denies that.
Thank you.
What do you, Senator, what do you think happens when the victim's statement, impact statement, families of people who have lost their lives to violence? What do you think when the victims say that they believe that this person should be released? What do you think? How much weight do you think the parole board gives that statement?
When they say the opposite, when they're saying this person has proven, it should be afforded great weight, in my opinion. I've actually been involved with certain cases like that. And as I said, on both sides of that aisle where someone has, you know, or for example, in vehicular fatalities where it's two best friends and the driver, you know, made a bad decision. And, you know, the family wants, it's given some weight, for sure. At least it was in my evaluation when I had those cases as a prosecutor. And although there's, it would not be controlling, but it would have significant weight. And I guess you're saying that rhetorically, that it isn't given much weight at all at a parole hearing.
Has absolutely no weight before a parole board. No weight.
So it seems the pendulum only swings in one direction?
It only swings in one direction.
Okay, fair enough.
And because it only swings in one direction and a couple of other reasons, we have to evaluate whether that should be included. It just tilts the scale just too much one way. And to your other question, you know, we, we're not just, we're not just, you know, criminal justice advocates. We're human justice advocates. And we value the lessons that we learn from the history of movements for social and racial justice in America. Whether it's the indigenous people fighting for land rights, Chicanos in the western part, Puerto Ricans, black African Americans fighting for social justice in this country. And we study this history because there are lessons to learn from this history. And nowhere in this history, even the civil rights movement, fighting for voting rights. We talk about human rights because this is what we perceive it to be a human rights violation. Mass incarceration has made incarceration in the United States a human rights violation. And nowhere in the history of these movements have people been excluded from human rights. This is the perspective that we come from. In addition, both bills only calls for a meaningful, individualized assessment as to whether a person should be released. Individualized. We're not talking about a category, creating a category. No matter what the person appeared before the parole board, this is one person appearing before the parole board and that person should be evaluated as an individual. And the parole board maintains discretion. Their discretion cannot be absolute. They can't say if a person walks on water that they could disregard that. They have the absolute discretion to disregard that miracle. There's discretion there. They still have discretion in evaluating whether the person should be released.
Thank you.
I realize we have quite exceeded our time for this panel. So I want to thank all three of you or panelists for taking the time to testify. And I'll turn it over to Senator Hoilman to introduce the next panel. Thank you.
May I, just for one moment? New York State statistics have shown that individuals in New York State have a nine have a 98% chance of not returning to crime once they are released. People that we are advocating for that have committed violent, heinous crimes have been sentenced by the judge. I cannot presume who should be released and who should not be released. That is a decision of the parole board that you honorable senators put in place. I don't think it's right for you to second guess or presume who should be released or not. You got a large job, I'm pretty sure. But you put them in place to decide that. But what we're asking you for is to return the parole board back to its original function, to see who a person is at the time of where they was, and then who they were when they appeared before the parole board. Of course, you look at the crime to see the contrast, to determine risk. But it should not be used again repeatedly to hold a person in. By that standard, there's no reason to even have a parole board. It's an insidious joke. At the parole preparation project, we have saw individuals come out, stay home for the now nine years that we've been in. We have a 98% success rate. What you're looking at is a national success rate. 40% of those individuals are technical violations that have driven up the statistics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon, for making that final point. Thank you to all the panelists. I think that's a really, a really good point that we have the parole board in place for a reason. And legislators should make it possible that people have the opportunity for the parole board to act and utilize their expertise in as many, as, as many instances as possible. And that's, I, I think, what we're discussing today. The next panel is a panel of aging adult advocates who are here today. And thank you in advance for your participation. Christian, Christian Gonzalez of the Brookdale Center for Healthy Aging, Alan Cohen of JASSA, and Alexandra Bailey from the Sentencing Project. And as we call up this panel on older adults, I just wanted to underscore what we've discussed earlier, which is that the estimate from the combined parole justice bills together would save the state over $500 million per year. As an idea of what this could support in communities, again, this is greater than the entire budget of the New York City Department for the Aging, which supports hundreds of thousands of older adults through contracted services such as over 300 senior centers, home-delivered meals, case management, and other home and community-based services, including some of which are provided by the representatives here today. So, we'll begin with Mr. Gonzalez, and we'd appreciate your testimony. Do we have a time limit on this?
Yeah, three, three minutes each.
Madam Chair says three minutes, so you better listen to her.
Let's talk fast.
No problem. All right, good morning, senators, and thank you so much for having this hearing. So my name is Christian Gonzalez Rivera, and I'm the Director of Strategic Policy Initiatives at the Brookdale Center for Healthy Aging, which is a research and policy center located at Hunter College at CUNY. So I'm here to testify in strong support of both bills that were, that were mentioned here and of a fair elder parole process. Our executive director, Dr. Ruth Venkelstein, submitted written testimony that makes it very clear that this is both an elder justice issue and a human rights issue. And so you have that testimony, and I'll just go into two points from that testimony. So why is this an aging and a human rights issue? People in prison exhibit sickness and disability much earlier than people outside. This means that people in their 50s in prison look like people in their 70s and 80s outside of prison in terms of their physical and cognitive health. So this is what you mentioned, Senator Hoilman, and also what Jose Saldana described so, so poignantly, and what we call in the aging field as accelerated aging. So accordingly, the average age of death for people in New York State prisons is just 58 years. If New York State prisons were a country, a life expectancy of 58 would rank it in the bottom 10 of countries in the world. In contrast, New Yorkers who are not in the prison system have a life expectancy of 81. A prison sentence that takes 20-plus years off a person's life is tantamount to the death penalty. New York was proud to abolish the death penalty back in 2004 on human rights grounds. And yet, right now as we speak, there are thousands of older people who are effectively on death row in New York. Now, why focus on people aged 55 and older who have served long sentences? It's not an arbitrary age cutoff. The recidivism rate for, for people 55 and older is almost zero. There's almost no chance that they'll re-offend, which means that justice is not being served by denying them the fair chance to state their case before the parole board. What we do know is that accelerated aging while inside rapidly closes the window of opportunity for people who could otherwise begin to rebuild their lives outside by getting a place to live, a job, and atoning for past harms by giving back to society. It closes the window of opportunity that determines whether a person will leave prison on their own two feet or whether they'll be rolled out in a wheelchair. We also know that the annual costs for caring for people in prison, over 55 in prison, are two to four times higher than for younger people. And it's about $100,000 to $240,000 a year. Taxpayers are footing that bill, and there is no net benefit to society for the amount of money we're spending in keeping people inside that do not any longer need to be there. Right now, the parole board has an arbitrary discretion on whether they'll approve a person's parole, and they often deny parole for no clear reason. What the fair and timely parole bill would do is put the onus on the board to provide a concrete reason why the person should not be released. And that's extremely important. And this is, you know, so clearly, I mean, it's like, as been said, as been said by many people before, this is not a get, get, get out of prison free card. This is, simply, I mean, it would entitle people who have served 15 or more years and are 55 and above a fair chance at having their parole board consider their case. And this is only fair. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Good morning, senators. Why is JASSA, a more than 50-year-old aging services organization that delivers the exact kinds of services that Senator Hoilman talked about testifying today about two parole bills? I think the answer is clear, and that's because of our values. The same values that drive our 1,300 caring staff people to support the health and welfare of over 40,000 older New Yorkers from all backgrounds. We know that with assistance, adults will be vital, older adults will be vital contributors to their communities. And that's why we're here today. Because incarcerated older adults who have rehabilitated themselves also deserve this opportunity to contribute to their communities. And as aging service providers, we will be there to provide support once they have returned. Governor Hochul launched a master plan for aging to ensure that all New Yorkers can age with dignity and independence through policies that promote the value of healthy, meaningful aging. These are powerful words, but the experience of older adults in prison tells a very different story, and we need policy change. And I will repeat things that you've heard because they are really clear. Three things that need to be considered. First, prisons are very poorly equipped to house older people and do cause, as Christian said, accelerated aging. Adults in prison suffer from disease and disability equivalent to people 10 to 15 years older who live in the community. So being 55 in prison is like being 70 on the outside. But even more shockingly, as we just heard, the average age of death in prison is just 58 years old. Second, the cost of incarcerating older adults completely outstrips what care in the community would cost. And third, there is no public safety reason to keep the majority of the aging people that these bills target in prison. Research has shown, over and over, that paroled older adults are unlikely to return to prison for new crimes. So keeping them incarcerated after serving long sentences undermines equity, justice, and compassion. And it is effectively capital punishment, death by incarceration. So we are here today to ask for justice, and it matters now. The number of incarcerated older adults aged 55 and older has increased at an alarming rate, principally black and brown men and women, many of whom have been incarcerated as teens or just young adults. These bills do not automatically free people. All they do is give incarcerated individuals who are 55 and older and who have served 15 years to go before a parole board. And that parole board would make their decisions based on whether they have rehabilitated while incarcerated and now demonstrate a readiness to return to the community. We do not want to live in a state that imposes or effectively imposes a death penalty on older adults in prison. We want to work to strengthen communities together. Thank you for allowing me to testify this morning.
Thank you. And Ms. Bailey?
Uh, thank you.
And if you could describe the Sentencing Project and...
Oh, absolutely. Well, first of all, thank you so much for having me. My name is Alexandra Bailey. I lead the campaign to end life imprisonment at, excuse me, the Sentencing Project, which is a 30-year-old research institution and advocacy institution that has been at the vanguard of research around our nation's carceral issues. And I'm going to repeat a lot of what people have said, but I actually think what I'm going to do is take the inspiration of the incredible people who came before me and have a vulnerable moment to start. I'm a survivor of what people would consider to be a heinous crime, if you consider the rape of a nine-year-old a heinous crime. That was the first time I was assaulted. I am in contact with the person who did that to me, who is serving a life sentence. I would testify on behalf of his parole tomorrow emphatically because people change. I also am an elected official in Washington, DC. In my free time, I'm Commissioner Alexandra Bailey, and I chair Public Safety. The safety of the public is something that I think about deeply. I hear the complaints of citizens who have survived, as you would describe, heinous crimes. And I've had to think very deeply about my role in that system. Here's the conclusion that I've come to. The state failed a lot of people first. We were the first victimizers because there is poverty in my district, because there's a lack of education in my district, because there's homelessness in my district, because there's a poor response to DV in my district, because veterans are left on the street to deal with their PTSD in my district. And that has led, in many cases, to their incarceration. I consider that to be a failure that, yes, I inherited, I did not create it, but I ran for office saying that I would address it. So, you have heard about the fiscal savings that will come from this bill. So here's what I would ask you to challenge both yourselves and all of your colleagues to. If you all can hold your hands up and say that everybody in your district has a legitimate first chance, the education they need, the housing they need, the food they need, the healthcare they need, the response to trauma and violence that they need, then perhaps second chances are not really necessary for your district. But if you can't hold your hand up and say that that is true, then the state is required to offer second chances because we did not offer legitimate first ones. So why don't we take the money that where we will give people who are not a threat to public safety this second chance? Why don't we take that money and make sure that our citizens get a legitimate first one? In the last 36 months, I survived a very severe DV situation that left me with a brain injury that I take seizure medication for every single day now and probably will for the rest of my life. And when I went through that situation, I chose not to retaliate to defend myself. Why did I make that choice? Because of what I do for a living. Because I know why people end up in prison. I know why black women end up in prison. I know a lot of those black women. And I know the services aren't there. I know the intervention is not there. And I know that it is a 50-50 shot that if I retaliated to the extent of violence that was being perpetrated against me, that I could end up behind bars. And when that happened, there would be no second chance for me. So who are we actually for? How are we defining victimhood? We have to think very deeply about this, and I understand the blowback of not being for the quote-unquote victim. I have had these pieces come out in the news about me, a survivor, because I took a stance that was difficult. But I believe my job as an elected official is to do what is just by everyone, not just by what is going to get me re-elected, not just by what the press is going to print. And then, you said this morning, Senator Salazar, that risk averse is something that is natural. When it comes to these bills, which the Sentencing Project is very much in favor of, this isn't a question of being risk averse. To not pass these bills is to be fact averse. Almost half the people serving a life sentence are 50 and older. One in four is at least 60 years old. That's nationwide. New York tracks this trend. 49% of lifers are 50 or older. Are you going to spend your money turning your facilities into hospice and elder homes? Or are you going to allow people the dignity of a second chance that as we can see, they 100% have earned and deserve? I wish that the person who perpetrated the crime against me was in a state with legislators who would contemplate the issue. You should be very, very proud to contemplate this issue. And I'm very thankful that you are. I hope that you will pass this bill. In regards to the data that you pointed out, the Sentencing Project, we're a group of geeks. I mean, everybody wears glasses. I mean, like, like, we come back from weekends and we're like, "Oh my God, did you read that report? We need to get a life." But a lot of what they point out in recidivism has to do not with violent crime, but with missing meetings with their parole officer because they were at work. Having to perform sex work in order to maintain a roof over their head, which is a part of their parole. So while that data, I understand your concerns, what you have pointed out to in the extraordinary cases that you have chosen to highlight is not what we're actually looking at in the data en masse. I'm happy to send the Sentencing Project's recidivism report. We did a 2020/50 state survey of the 55,000 Americans who were serving an LWOP sentence, which is a 60%, 66% rise since 2003. And that rise doesn't have to do with violent crime. It has to do with expanding what you can be criminalized for. And most of that is actually around non-violent crimes. We have tried our darndest to incarcerate ourselves out of the societal problems that we have. I think we've genuinely given the good college try. I think New York State most certainly has done that. But if this policy has not worked, then let us take that money from second chances and put it back where it belongs. The first chances that every single person that we all represent deserves from us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. It's very good to have the entire panel here. And I would just start off by speaking to, to you and your assessment of the age of 55, which we know that the New York State Department of Corrections has confirmed with us in a budget hearing that they use that age to designate seniors. So it's, it's in their regulatory... So it's in their regulatory framework. But could you tell us what you know about age 55 being like 70? 55 in prison, as you say, is like being 70 on the outside? And if that's the case, what is it like being 70 on the inside compared to what it's like on the outside? Mr. Gonzalez, since it was in your testimony...
Sure, yeah. Well, I mean, by way of answering that question, I mean, I, you know, just to sort of give you a few numbers on sort of the increased rate of sickness and disability inside. So while 31% of community-dwelling people, I mean, it's like people on the outside have a chronic condition. I mean, it's like whether it's asthma or hypertension or diabetes or any of those, that number is 44% inside. And when you look at just people age 50 or above inside, I mean, it's like who have those conditions, the number is 72%. So, I mean, it's like this just shows, I mean, it's like that being inside, I mean, it's like the constant stressors of being inside, the routines of being inside, the poor nutrition, I mean, it's like all these compounding negative health impacts are rapidly accelerating the onset of all of these conditions. And the fact is, I mean, it's like, you pointed this out as well, that effectively prisons are becoming nursing homes or hospices. And the fact is that, I mean, it's like, did you know that in New York State, there are no public nursing homes? So in effect, the prison system is becoming the only public nursing home in the state. And when you are dealing with, I mean, it's like an increasing share of the population that is older...
So they're nursing homes with bars?
Yes, that's right. That's exactly right, you know? So, and again, I mean, it's like, as has been pointed out before, the share of people in prison who are 55 and older is actually rising. So yes, in effect, these are becoming nursing homes with bars, as you said, Senator.
And what is your understanding, and Mr. Cohen or Commissioner, feel free to jump in, what is your understanding about the capacity for our corrections system to cope with individuals who are subject to accelerated aging, as you frame it? Is there sufficient capacity and skill set to provide the needs of this rapidly aging population? Mr. Cohen?
We don't see any capacity within the system itself. To deal with people who have chronic disease and chronic illnesses, there are very effective ways. We run a number of evidence-based chronic disease management, self-management programs that really enable people to manage those diseases. Part of that has to do with food choices, again, choices. Part of that has to do with exercise choices. Part of that has to do with the physical environment in which you find yourselves. None of those things are possible to control in prison. The physical plans are set up for a very different kind of population, certainly not an older one, certainly not one that's disabled or facing significant disabilities and aging. The food choices, the food choices only aggravate chronic disease. So while it is possible to address these things, to really work toward creating autonomy and independence on the outside, we don't see any possibility, at least in the current system, of being able to address this inside.
And how are you, how do you support individuals who are released? And what do you see in terms of that population and the services that you provide?
Well, first, I certainly want to acknowledge organizations like Osborne-Rapp, the Parole Preparation Project, who have been, from day one, working with this population and really trying to ensure that when they return, they can find ways to become independent and autonomous. I also want to put it in the context overall, like you hinted at, when we work in New York City, the New York City aging has a relatively very small budget, so the amount of money is available overall for services to address issues like affordable housing and other programs is really small. So we are in, we do exist in an overall context where society isn't necessarily putting the kinds of funds that are needed toward aging. With that said, again, we run chronic disease self-management programs that offer the ability to help, to offer to create the ability among people to really manage those illnesses that they've acquired due to all of these poor conditions. In those cases, we also do leadership training. So not only do they get to, people get to manage their own illness, but they become leaders and help others. And as what we heard, I think, in that first panel was all about how leadership happens among people and the amazing efforts and the impact of that. Second, for instance, we run a Medicaid medical home, so therefore, we're able to provide services directly that help people manage and maintain their illnesses. So that's a key area where people come from. We also are a provider of 17 older adult centers. These are places where anyone can come into, they can receive nutritious meals, they can participate in activities, and they can be welcomed back to community. We also run a grandparents resource project that obviously also addresses both the families of people, many of whom have parents who were incarcerated. And again, it's a way of welcoming people back in and ensuring that the families have the resources they need to be able to welcome people back. So those are just a few examples.
Are there any trend lines that either of you could identify in terms of whether the accelerated aging, is it, has that been a constant feature of our corrections system or is it made worse by other factors?
It has been...
Thank you, Commissioner. And thank you for your powerful testimony again.
It's my honor to be here. Thank you. As long as we have been tracking the data of what is available, and our data really kind of starts to get good around the 1970s, is sort of when we really get solid things. As long as we have been tracking it, what we know is that prison is a health-suppressing environment. Obviously, that is going to operate differently per individual. Women, LGBTQ individuals have specific needs that drive the aging harm disease differently than people who identify or live as men. But the data has always shown us that this is a health-suppressing environment, and the cost of health care is only rising. And that is for everyone. But in prison, there's probably about a five-to-10 factor compound of what it actually takes to get the level of care that you would need inside. And as a matter of fact, in a lot of the states that I've worked in, people who are the head of medicals, MDOC, have actually encouraged lawsuits so that they can try to get the things that they need to not violate their Hippocratic oath. I've met so many medical professionals who work in prisons who actually are very troubled in terms of the oath that they have taken and that they cannot deliver.
I was wondering, Commissioner, if you had, and I'll finish with this question, if you had any opinion or perspective on recent news that over 750 women formerly incarcerated have filed claims under the Adult Survivors Act here in New York for the sexual abuse that they endured over decades across New York's corrections system? And is that, was that surprising to you, that, that number?
No, unfortunately. Not at all. The Sentencing Project works in all 50 states. I have been present at prisons that have been shut down because there have been multimillion-dollar lawsuits for what is rather grossly known in Michigan as the "touch-me" money. They actually shut down that entire facility because it was essentially turned into a brothel. If we're going to expand what we're talking about in terms of aging, trauma, parole, and health, what women experience specifically, and the rate of incarcerated women has jumped by over 400% since 1980, with life sentences being doled out at a higher rate than ever before because we have included nonviolent crimes in extreme sentencing. And not only do they lose their children, their children lose them, we send them to places where more often than not, as you have seen, sexual assault of various kinds is present, which is its own health and human risk. But that is also what helps drive the rate of suicide amongst women in prison. So offering people an opportunity to go home, some glimmer of hope at some point during their incarceration, seems to be a very small ask, as I said, given our overall institutional failures to protect and care for those who are within our jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Oh, I love them.
I know, and that's why I think it's great to discuss, these discussions, I think, are very fruitful. And so, in that study, and some of the numbers that were suggested that were almost insignificant regarding violations of law, I guess, after people over 50, and I'm 52, by the way, you guys are all younger, but, you know, I'm not that old, so, but anyway. This Department of Justice report that I talked about earlier, and it was released, by the way, in 2001, and when Mr. Dixon mentioned those numbers were almost zero as far as non-technical violations, I pulled out the report itself and was digging through it. So it was released, you know, a little over a year ago, and I think it's important to note that, I don't know if this was, I think this is just simply numbers that were produced by the DOJ and the Bureau of Statistics, and there were, like, New York, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Georgia, Florida, California, Oregon, Washington, they were included, they were parts of those 24 states within this study. And on page 21, it indicates here, all regarding the violations, "In this report, arrests for probation and parole violations were included as public order offenses. Excluding such arrests from the analysis would have a small impact on the recidivism rates. The percentage of state prisoners released across 24 states in 2008 who were arrested at least once within 10 years would be 80.5% if arrests for probation and parole violations were excluded, and 81.9% if they were included. In other words, 98% of released prisoners who were arrested during the 10-year follow-up period were arrested for an offense other than a probation or parole violation." And I found further within this study, the 65, those individuals that were released at the age of 65 and older committed additional offenses at 40.1%. And so these, and again, just suggests, I don't think, I don't believe this is a partisan study. I mean, 10 of these eight years were under the Obama administration, this was released under the Biden administration. I think they're just simply stating numbers. So I would just ask if, how can we, how do we reconcile those numbers? Like, what is the methodology or what is the basis of the data? Where is that data that you folks are getting to say that these numbers are insignificant? Because I don't believe they are.
Well, the Sentencing Project digs in a whole lot deeper in terms of what the actual recidivism was for. I can actually send you our report on recidivism. It's lengthy, but it will also sort of give you a deeper dive. And also, definitions around what folks consider to be violent and nonviolent crime in terms of statute amongst states varies widely.
True. We've had those debates regarding burglary in the second degree, for example.
Exactly. Felony murder under second degree is an LWOP sentence, depending on the state that you're in. You're an attorney, you understand how complex one code is, and comparing them in those numbers is not quite, does not give a fully accurate picture, in my opinion, in the Sentencing Project. So I will send you our recidivism report so that we can actually dig in more specifically. But we go with violent crime, and we actually define it in our reports. And what the statistics that folks are pointing to have to do predominantly with first-degree rape, murder, what I think, based on what you've spoken here at this hearing, what I think you would consider to be heinous crimes. But how people interpret data and spit it out is not always equal.
Not to be smart, but would you not consider those heinous crimes? Rape one, murder one?
I'm a victim of rape. It was most certainly heinous and difficult for me at the time, particularly as a child. I do not, however, believe that the person who did that to me should be excluded from a bill like the ones that you're considering for the very simple reason that he was also a victim first. And perhaps if we lived in a society where, when he was victimized, there was some place he could have gone to talk about it, to heal his trauma, maybe I wouldn't have been a victim too. But because the money doesn't go there, it goes to hold him in prison for now well over 20 years, when I actively don't want that. You know?
You're a brave person to say that sort of stuff.
I don't think it makes me a great person, and there's actually a lot of studies now done on victims of violent crime, which I have actually taken part in, in some of those studies, which I can also send you about, what it is we are actually demanding, and it doesn't have to do with incarceration. You know, the protection that I want for society, as someone who chairs public safety, is to get to the bottom of why people are doing certain things. And locking them in a cage as if we didn't fail them first to bury our own sins is not an effective public safety strategy in my very well-informed opinion, both as a survivor and as somebody who works for a world-renowned research agency. Yes, they're heinous crimes. Should they be excluded? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. And I'll tell, and just to share one other story, I mean, when it comes to women defending themselves against DV, part of the reason that I didn't defend myself is because I knew what I would get prosecuted with, if that went even a little sideways, if I fought back. There's a lot of studies about women becoming, women are no longer considered victims the second they fight back.
It's a very laudable position for you to take that, to say that, as I said. I don't know if I necessarily agree with you. I don't know if every victim would agree, because having dealt with many, many victims over the years, but as I said, that's a very brave thing for you to say.
Go back and visit your victims 20, 30, 40 years later. Maybe many of them have healed, maybe some of them have not, but everybody being able to be heard before the parole board on both sides with a well-executed opinion as to why the person is confirmed or denied is a requirement of a transparent justice system and has nothing to do with whether or not I'm a good person. You know, I would save a kitten from a tree, but that's not what we're here about.
True. And this is a quick follow-up to that, because it seems on that, it seems as if you don't think incarceration is the answer for, under any circumstance. So in that regard, how do you explain that when there are high recidivism rates for sex offenders generally? When this person is not incarcerated, incarcerated, how do you explain that to the next victim? That this person's out because we want to, you know, really deal with their childhood troubles, which is the root of, I mean, we're painting with a broad brush here, and that's a terrible thing. But unfortunately, in our society, removing you from society is kind of the only answer we have because these folks have not rehabilitated themselves. So how do you explain that to the next victim that would not have been a victim had that individual been held?
Well, one, I'm not claiming that accountability is not required. That's not a statement that I have ever made, nor would I ever make. Accountability very frequently is required. However, permanent punishment is not statistically backed up. There are many studies on victims say that overwhelmingly, this is not what they want. And as has been pointed out by my colleagues, this is not a get-out-of-jail-free card. This is not throwing the doors open. We're asking for a 20-minute conversation where somebody who is aging and elderly has the opportunity to not cost the state money and die with dignity, or that somebody who has served a very long time of accountability has the opportunity to go before the parole board and require the parole board to state clearly why it is or is not granting parole to this... to state clearly why it is or is not granting parole to this particular person. If you haven't been sexually assaulted as a child, believe me, nobody cares about survivors more than me. I run support groups for them. I know what that pain is. And with respect, the lawyers who come in, if you haven't lived it, I respect that it probably had a lot of secondary trauma on you. But you have to listen to what those of us who have actually been through it want, and not just those who agree with you, those across the spectrum. You have to listen to people who were victims first. Now, maybe that doesn't mean that their parole is granted. Maybe they are not ready to be released. That is a possibility that is certainly on the table within these bills. But it is something that should be considered.
Is victims' impact, victims' statements, positive or negative? We had a previous panelist who said that, you know, there were situations where the victim or complainant in a crime was looking to have the individual released. And that wasn't afforded enough weight. And under fair and timely, the victim impact statement has less significance than the efforts at rehabilitation, according to the language of the bill. So how would you reconcile that?
I disagree. I feel that it weighs things evenly, which I think is the role of the state. The role of the state is to look at the system writ large to keep it balanced, not to come in on one side or the other. Now, I won't have the opportunity to testify for the person who harmed me because a bill like this is not being considered. But I would want what I feel and what they have done to have equal consideration. Because one thing that is absolutely true, you cannot fake integrity for ten, twenty, thirty, forty years. No, no person can do that. And what I experienced was a terrible moment in time. If I was not in contact with this person, I have no idea who they are twenty, thirty, forty years later. The prosecutor doesn't really, we're looking at the record and listening to both sides. And the state then has to make a neutral, unbiased decision. And in order to do that, you have to take everything into consideration under equal weight. I think that's just reasonable. I mean, these bills are fairly common sense, in my opinion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Pass it to Senator Tedesco.
Yeah, just one question. I didn't hear my colleagues say this. But are you including like acts of terrorism, the Boston bomber? They should be included at this at fifty-five?
So here's, here's the thing that I always say when I'm promoting second look bills or bills like this of any kind. You know, I often ask legislators, you know, do you know any members of the parole board by, by any chance? Have you ever met them or anything like that?
Yeah, they were here last year. Testimony, we talked to them. Had conversations about victim impact statements.
What combination of drugs and alcohol do you think they would have to be on to go, yeah, you're all good, see you later, buddy, in certain cases?
I'm not sure. What was the question?
They'd have to be drunk, wouldn't they? Like, I mean, if you met the members of the parole board, right? I mean, my understanding is that they're not exactly a bunch of crack-ups, right?
No, it's not that they'd make that decision. Is it in the law that that could be up for parole? That's all I'm asking.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if they'd be drunk or not be drunk.
No, I'm.
Who knows what their.
No, it was just, it was a joke.
If you were a parole board member, you would consider them for parole, right?
Again, consideration is not release. Granting somebody consideration is not release. And I mean, my joke.
If you felt they would be rehabilitated, you would release them, though.
Again, I can't speak for what the parole board will or will not.
No, I was asking you if you were a parole board member.
I would have to look at the facts of every individual case. I would want everybody to be included.
Yeah, well, that's the question I asked, yeah.
Yeah, there are situat, every situation is unique. The, the system should be a scalpel, not a hammer. And that is why their job is difficult. You know, but again, I mean, my joke, which, you know, I'm sorry it landed so poorly, is very simply that I do not think that any member who is appointed to your parole board, even in consideration of cases like that, would take them lightly. I think they would take a lot of time and a lot of thought. And I think they would give that time and thought, and they should be permitted to. I would doubt that they would come to the conclusion that the explosion of an entire town was something that, you know, the level of rehabilitation shown in that particular instance.
So why should we allow it in the law, then?
Because, because so many factors could play in. You have no idea what the contributing factors.
So they might allow it, then?
Potentially. I mean.
So, so you would agree this eliminates life without parole for some?
I'm sorry.
Life without parole. That would not exist anymore, potentially with this. They could still get parole.
No, it's, this is not a bill that eliminates life without the possibility of parole.
So if you get life without parole at fifty-five in fifteen years, you can't come up for parole no matter what?
So, I mean, I want to be very clear about this. It's very easy to conflate issues and to pull out what would be considered the most extraordinary circumstances to excuse the fact that the vast majority of people who are incarcerated in New York are not incarcerated for what has been defined here as either heinous crime or, in your particular instance, terrorism. The, the law should be as broad as possible to allow as much discretion as possible for the very simple reason that we do not know what will come before us.
So it's possible, if you got life without parole, you could be paroled under this law?
No.
I know this, is, am I right or am I wrong here?
Just to clarify, if someone in New York State, and we do have people in New York State who are given a life without the opportunity for parole sentence, if elder parole were law, it would not give that person an opportunity for parole.
So that's one exception, then?
I'm sorry. It's not necessarily one, one exception. But the bill as written would not, in my opinion, unfortunately, be able to change someone's sentence so that they would have an opportunity for parole if they have an LWAP sentence.
This bill is not the elimination of the ceiling of maximum punishment. It is the consideration of rehabilitation decades into incarceration. I understand the concern, again, I chair public safety. Like, I understand the concern of the worst-case scenario that could potentially happen. But the fact of the matter is, is that what we know statistically and just from reality of sitting in our chairs is that that's really not what happens. That is not what the vast majority of people who are incarcerated in New York State are there for. That is not reflective of who would be considered under this law on the average day-to-day parole hearing.
Yeah. And what we want is rehabilitation, like, we want that. Part of my concern is that if this bill passes, some judges might say, well, if I don't give this person life without parole, they could be out in fifteen years. And they say, this is a heinous crime. I wouldn't give normally life without parole, but I'm going to give it this time.
I mean, again, we can't predict what judges would do. My personal feeling, for what it's worth, when I am passing what we call resolutions, is to consider the rightness of it and the justice of it and the utility of it, all of which has been more than demonstrated here. But trying to predict what every actor is going to do is a futile exercise that will keep us from making progress where we need to make progress. Now, if at any point during the process after the hopeful passage of this bill, there are avenues that need to be addressed, tightened, gone back and revisited, that is something that this legislative body is more than capable of doing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I have some questions for all three of you. I'll start with Commissioner Bailey. You had mentioned during your testimony, or at least alluded to, cost savings to the state from, that, that we would see if people were not needlessly incarcerated for longer than, than necessary. If more people had the opportunity for parole, especially older adults who are increasingly likely, as they age, to develop health conditions, do you, how would you assess potential cost savings to the state? Maybe how those resources could be used? Do you have thoughts about that?
I think the cost savings is going to, are going to be realized in a multitude of ways. As with most departments within government, staffing is always one of the major costs and major issues. Your Department of Corrections, like Departments of Corrections across the country, particularly post-COVID, are having trouble recruiting and retaining staff and certainly having that staff be in an environment that is sustainable for them. In allowing people who frequently require a lot of attention and a lot of care the opportunity to be back in the community, you're actually going to be taking a lot of pressure out of your system in that regard. In addition to which, overcrowding of facilities, the cost of medical care, all of these things are going to go down. Our fine friends at RAP have given you extraordinary numbers on your potential savings, which I believe was in the five-hundred-million-dollar range year-over-year? Friends, is that about right? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Of five-hundred-million year-over-year, which is significant. I can tell you what we have done with a lot of this savings from the Incarceration Reduction Amendment Act in Washington, D.C. We opened a part of the mayor's office, which is about violence interruption. People who are formerly incarcerated, very frequently who were gang-affiliated from the neighborhood that is experiencing these various types of distress are now there addressing that. Personally, the violence rate in my single-member district is down by four percent. That is one avenue that you could take. Trauma response in its various ways. We know that people with mental illness tend to be incarcerated at higher rates. That is something that we could definitely use this money to get ahead of. We know that people who are unhoused very frequently end up in jails and prisons. That is something that we could use this money to potentially get ahead of. We definitely could use it within the educational system to help young people who do represent a very large portion of people who are sentenced to extreme sentences in the state of New York. We can see what we can do to get ahead of that trend happening for the next generation. I'm sure the teachers in every single one of your districts would appreciate the additional help and support in supporting their students' education and mental health. I mean, those are just a few ideas off the top of my head. I think we're woefully inadequate when it comes to domestic violence response, and obviously, that's a personal cause of mine. In terms of how we actually respond to that and allowing safety for people who are experiencing it and their families and allowing them to move on, these are all things that this money could be, you know, used to, to, to realize. I think the biggest challenge from this bill, if the very wise decision to pass it is made, is all the districts arguing over who needs what. But those are all things that have been done with savings that has been realized from Departments of Corrections and done to, to great effect. And I would argue to better public safety outcomes.
I just, I just wanted to correct the record as, as a sponsor of the bill. Fifteen A elder parole, it does effectively eliminate life without parole because there is a notwithstanding any other section of the law clause that would apply to sentences of life without the possibility of parole. So it's only, of course, a chance at parole, an opportunity at parole, but it is not, it does, it would override that current sentence.
My, I'm sorry, my understanding was simply that it does not remove it from the books in the sense that you can still be sentenced to life without parole, which, I'm sorry, my understanding of your question is whether or not it was a repeal of that statute, which my understanding is that it is not.
You're absolutely right. And that's why, and that's what Senator Salazar meant, too. But thank you, Senator Tedesco, for, for explaining your question further. And, and in fact, that is the, the impact of this, of this statute. Thank you.
Thank you. And your response is very informative. I also wanted to add, please send me, as, as I know you'll send to Senator Palumbo reports and, and studies that you had mentioned earlier. I deeply appreciate it.
We actually have a repurposing of prisons study coming out in two thousand and twenty-three. So I will send that along as well, of both the space and the money.
Excellent. Thank you. I have a question for Christian. You, I'm curious if you think that the potential release of elders that would be made possible by this bill, by the elder parole bill specifically, could improve public safety compared to the status quo? And if so, would you mind speaking to specific ways in which you see older adults, especially formerly incarcerated adults, if you can speak to that, contribute positively to public safety?
Yeah. I, I believe that there are people who can speak much better than I can to, to exactly that question. But what I can tell you is that people do change as they grow older. I mean, it's like they change developmentally in extremely important ways, which is one of the main reasons why, I mean, it's like from a sort of developmental perspective, it's not right to judge a person who is fifty-five on who they were when they were seventeen. But one of those ways in which people change is that they be, you know, a youngster who might be impulsive is much more reflective when they get older. And it's that kind of reflection that's really needed to be the kind of glue and the kind of gel that holds societies together. Because when you think about it, I mean, it's like we're a very individualistic society. I mean, it's like everybody's sort of out for their own and, you know, what they need to do. But the people who are back home in communities, holding together the tenants' associations, holding together like my grandma did, I mean, it's like my family, I mean, it's like which, you know, we're, my family's from Cuba. My parents had to work really hard to get into the middle class and get me to where I am today. Grandma was at home, holding this together. There are many people, I mean, it's like of lots of different, that I've had lots of different life experiences, long life experiences, who have that role of bringing people together. And the fact is that the people who have been through prison, I mean, it's like this is the kind of extreme environment that really forges a strong personality. And to have that kind of person with a strong personality and that kind of courage to be in, in a community and being that glue is what we need more of.
Thank you.
Even if you want to be impulsive, your knees don't allow it anymore.
And a question for Mr. Cohen as well. So I've met individuals who are currently incarcerated, particularly at Fishkill Correctional Facility, where there's a higher number of individuals with long-term health conditions and, and aging adults who, even after being granted parole, are often still in, in custody in a facility because, ostensibly due to their crime of conviction, they are denied placement in housing that, that they would need as someone with a, a long-term condition, right? Someone even in the long-term care unit at, at Fishkill. I'm curious if you have, are familiar with cases like this where someone who is, is aging and/or has a long-term condition is denied services, not by JASA, but, but in general, and particularly housing? And if you have thoughts about that, the impact on society, on these individuals, or any other thoughts about it?
Thank you for the question. I think what we know is aging with independence and dignity in community requires a complex, comprehensive set of supports and services, including affordable housing. What we see today is that we are, as a community, as a society, in crisis. And this is a challenge that we need to address. We have challenges recruiting, retaining staff. I'm answering this really in the question of what will we do with this new windfall that we should, we should find? We need to bring in, we need to build more housing. We do need to provide additional services that, for all of. We do need to provide additional services that for all of older people to age in society and age well. Once people return to the community, they too can take advantage of and be part of different types of housing. The question in many cases, though, is as they come out, they find themselves at the back of a 10-year waiting list for people who have been waiting for housing. They can't get on that waiting list before they come out. So we face a challenge that we face for all of society, and we need to really address that as quickly as possible because we know how to serve people. We know how to how to provide supports, and I and I want to be clear, because you saw the panel before, we're not simply serving people, we're helping, we hope, provide platforms both for the extraordinary, but even for the ordinary who come out, who with basic supports, they too can become leaders in their communities. They too can serve as examples to children in in schools and in communities. And they can also find nutritious meals. They cannot, we we see an array of food insecurity among older adults, and that's not only because for multiple reasons. Sometimes it's because they can't afford it, sometimes because fresh food is not nearby, sometimes it's because they don't know the right things to eat based on conditions. We know how to address these issues, and with more funding, both for people who are coming out as well as for those who are in community now, we could address it. But we want to go back to the issues of this is an issue, we feel, as aging service providers, of justice, of trying to right wrongs of the past, and we would welcome, as Christian noted, people who have served their time into our community centers, into our different programs, because they will make our our services and our communities much more vital.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'd like to add a piece to this, actually. I mean, it's, you know, just, I'm an urban planner by training, and I'm in the field of aging. I mean, it's like, and so the the essential nexus between those two is really thinking about how do we build cities, both physically and also, you know, sort of the cognitive aspects of a city? How do we build it to be enabling environments for as many people as possible? Right? I mean, it's the opposite of an enabling environment being a disabling environment. So what this shows is that, I mean, it's like when you label somebody as having a disability, it's really not just about the person, it's it's about the interaction of that person and their environment. And of course, when somebody is inside, that is the ultimate disabling environment. You know, one that, I mean, it's like reduces the vitality of people and also, as I said, reduces the window of opportunity that that person might be a positive force on the outside. So that means, I mean, it's like this is state-inflicted additional harm on top of the harm that's already been caused. And so essentially, I mean, it's like what Alan is describing is what an enabling environment looks like, what an environment that creates a space for healing for individuals and enables them to have the ability to do well. You know, I mean, it's like, so that's really what we're trying to say here. I mean, it's like we're trying to eliminate the number of people that are in disabling environments and put them in enabling environments.
Thank you. All right, I know we've exceeded our time again. I don't like to interrupt anyone, so I just want to thank all three of you for your testimony today. Deeply appreciate you taking the time, and I think if there are any additional questions, we'll move on to our next panel.
Thank you all so much. Thank you for listening.
So.
Wow, I feel like I'm the Lone Ranger here.
I want to consult with Carol and see if she says. Yeah. Yeah. Let me actually.
Great, but I'm guessing I'll still be the Lone Ranger.
Sorry for the confusion. Senator Holman and I both have to attend conference shortly, so we have scheduled a break from now until 1:15. So we'll start again at 1:15 with the third panel, Commissioner Shapiro. All right, welcome back.
Is this on? Yes.
And thank you, everyone, for your patience. As I mentioned earlier, the Senate Democrats are are conferencing right now, so there was a little bit of a delay, but we are back for our third panel. We also have been joined by Assemblymember Khalil Anderson from Queens. Yeah, and we'll go ahead and begin before I turn it over to former New York State Parole Commissioner Carol Shapiro. I wanted to mention that both Acting Commissioner Anthony Anucci from DOCS and Tina Stanford, the Chair of the Board of Parole, were invited but declined to testify today. Would that give it over to Carol Shapiro?
Thank you. Well, it is really a privilege to be here today. You've heard so much this morning. I did serve on the New York State Parole Board from 2017 to 2019, and I am so in favor of these bills, partially or mostly because I saw the transformation of people who came before the board. As you've heard the testimony before me, there are many, many accomplishments that people, in spite of the most draconian conditions, are able to accomplish while in prison. And sadly, we just keep them there way too long. And what I really love, for example, about Fair and Timely is it reinforces what the purpose of parole really is. The purpose of parole was designed to assess the readiness to go home, not to resentence and not to keep somebody in prison perpetually. And I also really support the elderly parole bill from my experience because there are so many elderly people in our prison system who, as you already heard from the testimony, are ill but so able to go home and be mentors and supports to their communities and families. Just on a personal note, I have spent my entire life since the age of 16 on criminal justice reform, and I joined the New York State Parole Board with the hope that I could underscore the value of transformation, and I found the experience to be quite difficult and toxic. I also should say that I know victimization firsthand. My mother was crushed by a drunk driver when I was a child, but I was lucky enough to grow up with feelings of redemption and forgiveness, something that we don't really talk about here. I also want to say on a personal note, I founded a nonprofit that was a spin-off of Vera Institute, and we won an Innovations in American Government with the New York State Parole Board and system in the 90s. So and I've worked around the country and the world with different parole systems. I think New York is really, as you've heard, ready for a massive overhaul. I think DOCS needs to do a much better job of preparing people for the interview process. If it weren't for parole prep and some of the other nonprofits that are working in our prisons, many people are not prepared for the interview through no fault of their I also, we haven't talked about it, but, you know, the conditions that people go home with, whether it's under Fair and Timely or if they get out under the Elder Parole Bill, the conditions set are set by the parole board, and some of those conditions also can be very draconian and have massive impact on families and communities. And you already heard the statistics on people aging in prison. My own research showed that by 2030, 20% of our seniors will have their geriatric care in our in our prisons, and that's a national number. So I just think these bills are imperative right now to bring some transparency and fairness to our parole process. I have categorized my own experience, and I'll speak only for myself as a commissioner on the parole board, as experienced conveyor belt justice. I don't think you can imagine the piles of paper you have to deal with right before a meeting, an interview. I don't think you can understand the volume of people that we see in any given day and the travel required around the state. And I certainly agree that an in-person meeting is a very different experience than a video teleconference, but regardless, we need to be treating people with respect when they come before us, and I found that sorely lacking. And part of that is if you only ask people, the first question out of your mouth is about the index crime or the crime of conviction, you're starting with a deficit and a negative. If we turn that around and ask people what are they proudest of that they've accomplished, you'd see a very different human being. So I I'm grateful that you're having this hearing and hope that we can make some headway this year to bring some fairness to our system, and I would love to help in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have some questions. I'm sure Assemblymember Anderson may have questions as well, but I'll go ahead and begin. Could you speak to how the Fair and Timely parole bill, in your opinion, would specifically improve parole hearings and outcomes?
Okay, well, I'm particularly excited about the fair about that particular bill, Fair and Timely, because I really think it just underscores the purpose of parole. And instead of just awaiting the crime of conviction, which is what many parole board members seem to do, it it ensures that we will see the person for who they are today and what they've accomplished. And as my colleague said, not everyone's going to have, you know, an armful of degrees or, you know, they may not be able to, but most of the people I saw had accomplished a lot in their time while they were there. And I think just the opportunity to see somebody and recognize, and it goes to the hope we hope people have in prison for release, it goes to show respect of what they've worked on, the responsibilities they've taken, understanding the harm they may have caused to people or families or communities, to their own families. And I think it lends some transparency that this isn't about resentencing. It's about who are you today? Can you go home? What are your what have you prepared to do that? And it's frankly how I tried to operate as a parole board commissioner.
Yeah. And in your experience as a parole commissioner, is it true that parole board release rates vary widely depending on who the commissioner is?
Yeah, I I mean, I think all of us bring a line in the sand, you know, when we do our jobs, our belief system and our value systems. And yes, I think there's great variety. I think I was part of a group of commissioners that was designed to expand the parole board to bring on in more people with experience in the social services or in the justice realm. But the reality is, it does matter. And also, when I served on the parole board, there were times where there were just two of us, two parole commissioners, which meant that if you didn't, if you disagreed on the outcome, it was called lack of consensus, and the person would have to come back the next month, truly frowned upon, as you can imagine, because of the workload. So, yeah.
Wow. And that and in those cases, or at least some of those cases, it was not due to any fault of the
Correct.
Perspective.
Correct. But I think you're you're it's there's no litmus test to being on the parole board, you know, and I think historically it had been many political appointments, but I think you people bring in their own values. I think most of us obviously have to follow this, we had to follow the statutes, and we did so. But, you know, there were some people who would say, I just can't let this person out, you know, for whatever reasons. And, you know, so it's hard to be, you know, if you're asking people on the board to be objective, they need the information, and it does help, the Fair and Timely bill at least helps them say, you've got to look at who they are today, not just who they were 20 years ago, 30 years ago, 40 years ago.
Yeah, absolutely. So there have been reports previously, public reports, indicating that there are racial disparities in the New York State Parole Board's release rates over the past six years. In your opinion and experience, why do you think those racial disparities persist? And do you think that the Fair and Timely parole bill would have an impact, perhaps, to help remedy those disparities?
Well, you're asking like the million-dollar question about our racial disparity in our justice system. I mean, I think that's part of it. But I can tell you, it doesn't matter who the members of the parole board are in terms of their skin color or beliefs. I think there is a racial, there has been a racial bias. I think Fair and Timely parole is not going to eradicate our racial biases that we have. What it does do, however, is require parole board members to take seriously who's who's in front of them today, and I think that might, over time, mitigate against some of the racial disparities that we see in terms of release decisions.
Excellent. Thank you. I'll hand it over to Senator Palumbo and then Assemblymember Anderson.
Thank you, Commander Chair. Commissioner, nice to see you.
I'm very well. How are you, sir?
I'm well, thank you. And regarding
Fair and Timely parole, I think generally as an idea to have a strict criteria to be considered. As long as, I mean, and and I've been discussing it now, we've been discussing it all morning. I certainly understand your position in that regard, and I think we can all kind of wrap our arms around that, as having specific criteria, as long as we at least have the weight of society and victims' impact statements giving appropriate credit. Where that credit lies, I'm sure, is subject to debate. But regarding the the elder parole, and do you do you think that there should be, and I know certainly, having sat on the parole board as a commissioner, you recognize the impact that just a parole hearing on behalf of a victim-sensitive crime has tremendous impact on the on the families, particularly those that are, you know, close contact type of where people knew each other, they're going to be released into back into the community, and this is really, they go through a lot. Do you think there should be a distinction between a victim-sensitive crime, someone who's eligible for parole, versus someone who is in on a drug offense, for example?
Right. Well, my personal opinion, having done many victim-impact statements in my life and worked a lot in the role of victim and offenders in community in the course of my own experiences, I think that the victim has its say at sentencing. And I think we understand, as I said, my mother was crushed by a drunk driver, and it I it's not healthy for me to have to relive that every few years. I do think, as a society and as a culture, we need to do better in terms of dealing with victims of heinous crimes in particular. I think that they need a way to heal, and unfortunately, we've we now have a system that the way they continue to heal is to do a victim-impact statement every time their perpetrator comes up for parole. And what I have seen personally is the impact on their own health, their own well-being, if you will. The PBA comes, the parole, you know, Police Benevolent Association sits in the room urging them to come forward and tell their stories. And I just, I think that the parole process should absolutely understand the impact. And I think we look for, or I did look for, ways that they that the person coming before the board understood the harms that they've done. And I think that what we're asking with Fair and Timely is just to consider, you know, who they are today, because we are all so much different than the worst things we've ever done in our life. And I saw people who committed their heinous offense, and they were horrible. And I can tell you, I had threats from people when I let people out, from the PBA, from the governor, from many people. But the truth is, some of them were like 17, 18, 20. In Europe, you're not even considered an adult until you're 26. So you realize we've incarcerated people for multiple generations, and yes, they've done some horrible things, but I think that the time of Fair and Timely parole is just to consider who that person is today. to consider who that person is today. And it is not to say you're discounting the harm to a victim.
Do you feel as if a current, and you said, so they had their say at sentencing many, many years ago. So now, if, for example, in that victim-sensitive crime, like a rape, I guess is the example we're using hypothetically, that person is still suffering tremendous distress today...
I understand.
And you have, of course, the defendant now has, you know, said, look, I'm sorry, it was a bad point in my life, you know, I've gotten a GED. Do you think that they should have equal, I mean, I guess you're, it almost sounds like you're saying that the impact statement was still going on in their life is almost not important? Or, actually, I'm not saying not important, but that was a poor choice of words, but you know what I mean. It should not be a contributing factor or a factor that's considered heavily regarding release of that individual, because although they destroyed this person's life, they're doing better. You see what I mean? And I'm not being flip.
No, I quite understand, but I think that if you look at the purpose of our sentencing and punishment paradigm in the U.S., the idea is that you do serve your sentence and you do move on with your life. And I'm suggesting the same thing needs to happen to victims of heinous offenses. Where were they? You know, it's, victim work started as a part of the office of the prosecutor. It was designed to get victims to testify. My suggestion and ways of thinking are, we have to do better by them beyond that. And I agree with you. Look, as I mentioned, my mother was crushed by a drunk driver. And a rape or some of the other heinous offenses that I have or witnessed to in my career suggest that these harms really do take a toll. And I'm just suggesting, I don't think keeping a person in prison is a way to heal that victim.
Understood.
But I understand your perspective. I just don't agree with it.
That's why we have these discussions. Thank you, Commissioner.
Fair enough.
Assemblymember Anderson?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Chairwoman, for allowing me to crash this Senate hearing to talk about such a very, very important subject matter. And I thank you, Commissioner, former Commissioner, for being here this afternoon, answering some really critical questions about two bills that I've received a lot of feedback about and from, from my constituents. I get letters in the mail every so often from constituents who have served a significant amount of time in incarceration and are looking to these bills to provide them an opportunity to see life outside. So I have a few questions in regards to the two bills. In your testimony, you mentioned the cost to detain individuals who have, who are eligible for elder parole. Can you speak a little bit to why that cost is extraordinary? For those who are just tuning in, in her testimony, it costs anywhere between $100,000 and $240,000 per year for an individual who's incarcerated, who is advanced in age. Can you speak a little bit to those costs?
Well, I think some of the former panelists did a much better job than I'm able to do, but the reality is, is the, as you age in prison, the, your health issues exponentially get worse. And I think the cost of maintaining people, you know, who have serious health issues in prisons, if they are not a risk, and if they, you know, serve their minimum sentence or in the elder parole bill are 55 or older, just provides that mechanism for them to go home. It is money that actually, and I think we heard testimony, can be re-diverted back to the communities most in need. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, Commissioner. And I, when I had visited some state prisons across New York, just seeing individuals who are advanced in age, either using wheelchairs or in and out of the infirmary, I can imagine that those costs would be incredibly high, but I did not know it was this high.
Yeah, it's really high because you also have, you know, I'm 68, and I can tell you all the medical issues that you start to face as you age.
Absolutely.
And I think, and it's been talked about, is the impact of the environment, the food, the lack of hope to go home is paramount. And I think that we've created this system of oppression in our prisons, and we've created this industry that just keeps it going. And I, and I think if we can divert that money back to our communities that are most affected, it's a much better use of our limited resources. And we have human resources. I mean, I think the people I met serving on the parole board who came before me and my colleagues had accomplished way more than most of the people I know. They have just worked so hard to learn about themselves, the harms that they, you know, inflicted on others, the impact on their own children of the incarcerated.
Exactly.
You know, it deserves recognition. Fair and Timely does that. Elderly parole just says, look, you're an older person, you've served, you know, a good period of time. Who are you today? And if we can release you safely in the community, it's a wise financial choice for this state.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I have one more question. I'll save the other one for the next panel, but this one's around, I think you mentioned it when you were, the last round when you were speaking to Senator Palumbo, but there is a cognitive development theory that says that individuals who are under the age of 25 might have some cognitive development pieces that need to grow and impact their decision-making abilities. So those individuals who have come before you, who are under the age of 25, that have been asked, or eligible, or came before the parole board, what were your experiences like with those individuals?
Well, I feel lucky enough, when I joined the parole board, there was a new law that said if people were under the age of 18 at the time of their crime, heinous offense, you had to consider the context of where they lived, who they were at that time. I think it should be extended beyond 18, but I think it's really important. And when you look at Europe, or you look at some of the developed countries, they recognize that people are, don't have the cognitive decision-making abilities that you have as you get older.
And that was during your period, but there's no statute currently for 25 and under? Or is it right now it's 18?
No, it's 18 and under.
It's 18 right now?
Yeah. And I think it's very significant, because when you start to look at the context of where somebody was, like, think of your own lives, right? Where were you when you were 18? What kinds of decisions were you making? Or 17? And then you also add into that if it was the '70s or the '80s. That's, I met people from the '70s or '80s, Black Panthers, others who were involved with political, you know, violence. You just start to understand who they were then, and it doesn't mean that's who they are today. And that's a hard, I understand that's a leap for people, particularly when you just read a face sheet, right? You just see the crime and you go, oh. But you realize the amount of time that's passed. And I think it's very significant to look at the context of who the person was when they did this. Drugs, for example, huge thing. Selling drugs, getting caught up in gang violence, all of those kinds of things, most people age out of.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, for your comments.
Thank you. I have a couple additional questions. You know, I'm thinking about how the, the norm, I suppose, of focusing on, constantly on the nature of the original crime, it's not, in my assessment anyway, something that is invented by parole commissioners, but something that is really pervasive in our society in the way that we think about crime. And I'm wondering if, and you did mention earlier in your testimony, facing threats during your time serving on the board, and I'm sorry to hear that, did you find that commissioners, whether yourself or others, were fearful of releasing people who may have deserved release when they came before the parole board, but were fearful of releasing them solely because of potential fallout and that focus that so many of us hold on to on the crime of conviction?
You raise a really excellent point, and I do think, and I'm not maligning any of my colleagues by saying this, but, you know, a number of my colleagues were, are serving now without reappointment. It is a political appointment. You don't really want to be on the front page of the Post, or you really don't want a police commissioner or a governor saying, I can't believe this person was released. So, yeah, I do think there are people, and, you know, you have to be a strong person who can maintain objectivity if you're going to serve on the parole board. It should not be tied to your job security. It should be tied because you really believe you're a good person to make some judgments about somebody going home. And I think that's a tough one, and I don't know that we have a process, a transparent process, for appointing parole board members who are able to do that at this point in time.
Senator Holman?
Thank you. Good to see you, Ms. Shapiro. I appreciate your coming today. You said in your testimony that the elder parole legislation isn't a blanket release policy, nor does it guarantee release for anyone based on their age. What would you say to people who are concerned that the parole process isn't rigorous enough and that if an individual does come before the parole board, as they would under elder parole, could you describe what that review would look like to give, to give the public assurance that these cases will be heard thoroughly?
Yeah, it's another very good question. I personally believe that the more you have protocols in place to help people make some of those decisions and to have to justify why they're keeping somebody in prison, other than the deprecation clause, would go a long way to give the public more security in how these decisions are made. You weigh very carefully who the person was at the time, but who are they today? What have they done? And I think the public, we need to change that conversation more publicly, right? All we read about in the paper are the heinous offenses and a reaction to them. I think the more stories we tell about the successes of people who are released, particularly the elderly, the more we will have the confidence of our public behind this. And I do think there is a bevy, there are a bevy, I mean, New York City is very rich in resources, but I think there are a lot of resources in this state to help people make that transition home. And one other thing I would do, and I would hope all commissioners would do, is ask people what would help them. What would help you when you go home? You know, which is a very strength-based approach as opposed to deficit-based, and I think those kinds of things will add confidence. And the more stories we tell from family members, the communities of which people are returning to, those kinds of stories will help chip away at this blanket fear we have of people coming home from prison.
Thank you.
That's all my humble opinion, I want you to know.
All right. Well, I don't have additional specific questions, but if there is anything else that you would like to add...
No, I just want to thank you again for a serious consideration of these bills. And it's, I left the parole board largely so that I could really bring parole justice to bear. Thank you.
Thank you for using your experience to do that. Our next panel will include Alice Hamlet from Common Justice, Teresa Bliss, Luz Marquez...
Ben Boe.
Shaniqua Purvis. All right. Take as much time as you need, but feel free to begin when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. There we go. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Salazar, Chairman Holman, members of the joint committees. Thank you for the invitation to be here today and to give my testimony. My name is Teresa Bliss, and I am the mother to David Bliss, a homicide victim. At the young age of 25, my son's life was stolen from him. On March 24th, 2021, at 3:30 in the afternoon, in broad daylight, my son was murdered as he went to pick up pizza to bring home for us. A complete stranger made the conscious intentional decision that day to pull the trigger on his illegal handgun, not once but several times. The gun jammed after the first shot. A fatal bullet to David's abdomen pierced his main abdominal artery, where then over 40% of his blood spilled onto the sidewalk where he was left to die. After a jury trial, the defendant was found guilty of second-degree murder and criminal possession of a weapon and sentenced to 40 to life. The prospect of him ever being released any earlier is devastating to us. Murder devours innocent lives with a cruelty that is absent of reason, absent of values, and absent of compassion. Murder can never be undone or compensated. One of the arguments made by proponents of these two bills is that everyone deserves a second chance regardless of the crime. I'd like to know where my son's chance at life is. What about his hopes and dreams? A career, family, all gone, wiped out in an instant. As far as I'm concerned, all these incarcerated individuals have a second chance. They're alive. No, we don't have the death penalty in New York. So all these murderers' lives are spared, unlike my son's and the thousands upon thousands of victims in this state. Instead, they're in prison, eating, laughing, watching TV, playing basketball, listening to music, visiting family members. Where are my visitations with my son now? You know where they are? They're with his ashes and his urn that sit on a memorial table. There is no expiration or end date on justice. These bills are essentially ending any form of justice the deceased and us as co-victims have. Just knowing they could be paroled earlier or granted release upon their very first interview before the Board of Parole is revictimizing and causing more trauma to families. We are already often neglected by the criminal justice system. It's about time our voices be heard and validated. Senator Salazar, in the May 9th Committee Agenda Meeting, you stated in part, the parole process is really about the life of the person who is eligible for parole. With all due respect, that's where you're inaccurate. It has very much to do with all the victims involved. Senator Holman, in your recent op-ed in the Daily News regarding the Grievin' Families Act, you stated reckless or negligent individuals must be held to account when their mistakes claim an innocent person's life. It can mean the difference between them learning their lesson and doing more harm. We shouldn't be giving bad actors a free pass. So if you would apply this recklessness or negligence, how could you possibly not apply the same exact notion to an individual who commits the intentional act such as murder? Our present New York has established statutes and sentencing guidelines used in the criminal justice system. They're essential. One has to question that, given the language in these bills, what would be the purpose, then, in a judge's role in determining and subsequently handing down an appropriate sentence they deem fit for the crime? Second-degree murder carries a 25-to-life sentence. If these bills were to ever be enacted, in essence, what they're doing is undermining a judge's authority, expertise, and significant responsibility of sentencing under the current sentencing guidelines. Under Fair and Timely parole, you're changing the current guidelines is what you're doing and essentially removing indeterminate sentences. The families didn't ask for this life sentence of agony and pain. And our loved ones who were stolen never asked for their lives to be taken either. Those that committed murder did know. They did ask for this life. They chose it the minute they made that decision to take an innocent life. They knew the consequences. We all know. Murder should unequivocally be the exception to these pieces of legislation. You take a life, you really should do a life. Evil shouldn't be awarded freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Shaniqua, if you would like, if you're ready to speak next?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here. That was a lot just now, so I just need a second. I am the Executive Director of Both Sides of the Violence, Inc. My name is Shaniqua Purvis. Both Sides of the Violence, Inc. provide services to justice-impacted youth and grief support for victims, along with other resources for our community. We work in nature development, schools, and jails promoting proactive ways to stop violence. In 2002, my sister, 28-year-old Maisha Pumpkin Hubbard, was killed by a stray bullet while in our first-floor apartment at Tonka's Houses in Brooklyn. She left behind a son who was 10 years old when his mom passed. This left our family devastated, and we would never be the same. We were violated in our own home. But with this, her assailant, who was sent to prison for manslaughter and came home, committed to changing his life. The hurt and pain of losing a sibling... The hurt and pain of losing a sibling, my best friend, is unimaginable, especially when I was the one that found her. You never want another family or community to experience that. So currently, in my healing, and I'm gonna say that again, so currently, in my healing, I mentor this man and his progress, backing his initiative to develop a boxing program so community members can have a safe way to build self-confidence and relieve stress through regular exercise. Justice, to me, means that he goes on to help others prevent acts of violence from happening. I have also, I have a father-in-law who was incarcerated most of his life. Before entering prison, he was depressed and clouded by his untreated traumas. Now he's 63-years-old and won't go to the parole board till 2029 if he makes it that long. The average age of death in NYC prisons, New York State prisons, is only 58. Addressing trauma before people commit crimes and enter the system is key and part of my mission. I advocate for people like the person who committed this crime against my sister. I advocate for my father-in-law so he could come home and get real help outside of prison walls and live the rest of his life in peace around family. His crimes was nonviolent. Lastly, I advocate for people like my fiancee, who was 16-years-old when he was sentenced to seven years to life and ended up doing 16-and-a-half-years in prison because the parole board denied him nine times. Finally, a judge intervened and ordered them to release him. By his first parole hearing, his Compas Risk assessment score showed that he could be safely released and had done real work to change, but the board denied him again and again simply because of one thing he could not change, his conviction. My life has deeply, my life has been deeply affected by violence in the community and mass incarceration, and my experience is the norm, not the exception. I'm also a chaplain, ordained minister, and received my honorary doctorate degree in humanities from my community. I'm on the community board and the 79th precinct clergy council. All of this is why I'm testifying this week at the state senate hearing in support of elder parole and fair, timely parole bills to promote healing, transformation, and safety. I'm also working with the Groan Coalition to pass a bill for access to victim compensation, which will remove barriers to healing support faced in vast majority of crime victims and survivors. Most of the people I support through my organization get none of the victim services funds in the state collects from people convicted of crimes. Without us, their trauma would just get absorbed into a big, great mass of hurt created by generations of poverty and racism. I believe if a person made a mistake, especially if it's tied to traumas in their lives, they should be able to come home and help others learn from their mistakes. The only way this vicious cycle can be broken is through us. Together, we could reduce traumas and reduce the violence that is caused by hurt people. We can keep their life experience, we can't keep their life experiences in a cage forever. Thank you very much.
When you're ready, Luz Marquez.
It is said that when we speak truth, we are able to release our ancestors who weren't allowed to speak their truth and the children yet to come. So I just wanted to say that to my fellow survivors. Thank you, Chair Salazar and New York State Senators. I'm a resident of Troy, New York, born and raised in East Harlem, a first-generation Black Puerto Rican, mother of three, and an adult survivor of childhood sexual abuse and incest and rape. By the time I was seven, I was sexually abused by my older brother. By the time I was 12, I was molested by my mother's boyfriend at that time. And by the time I'm either 14 or 15, because the brain does this interesting thing to you when you experience trauma, so I can't remember how old I was, I was raped by a family friend. And I'm sorry that Senator Tedesco isn't here, because this is my victim impact statement to you all. I am here in support of parole justice now, and I'm not alone in these traumatic experiences. We have over 42 million survivors of childhood sexual abuse in this country, making this a pandemic human rights issue worse than COVID. Like many survivors of color and other marginalized survivors, we're not seen as crime victims, as you heard one of my fellow crime survivors say. We're often only visible to any system as people who only commit crimes. Darling Lulu, as she is affectionately called, Darling Lulu Benson Say, is another adult survivor of childhood sexual abuse and intimate partner violence and the child of a murdered parent. When you experience such childhood trauma like I did in Lulu, the world looks very different, and you respond to the world in a very different way. When society thinks about crime victims and people who commit crime, we're taught that there's a us versus them, there's a victim, and then there's a harm-doer, as if we are not sometimes one and the same. But Lulu's tragic life exemplifies exactly that we're not separate. And if we are to truly address any form of violence, because that is really what the issue is, not we as individuals, then we need to address the issue of mass incarceration. Systems such as educational systems, healthcare systems, child welfare systems, the criminal justice systems, they failed me, and they failed Lulu and the millions of other people that are behind bars. Our coping mechanisms are not seen under a study where we receive trauma and form services, but rather, we're literally sent from school, as young as elementary, into a pipeline of juvenile detention and later, life in prison. Our state needs more funding and resources for culturally-specific programs such as "The Last Speaker Spoke," because crime victim compensation is not even something that most people get access to who are Black and Brown in this city, and actually, not just in the city, excuse me, but across the country. Culturally-specific organizations are designed specifically to work directly with Black community, private Black survivors, Latino survivors, Asian Pacific Islander survivors, survivors who represent LGBT communities, and people with disabilities. We spend more time funding the criminal justice system than funding what survivors actually need, which are healing centers and spaces that understand us, which can also help with early childhood detention in schools and support for healthcare, that support we can get from healthcare providers. From the age of 12 until I was 19, I struggled with abusing drugs, school truancy, teen pregnancy, petty theft. I could have been Lulu. But I got lucky. That's the only difference between Lulu and I. I got lucky and ran away from home for the very last time. I had run away from home since the age of 12, and when I learned that you can go to college and your parents will let you go, because my parents were Puerto Rican and they were not going to let me go, I said, "I'm gonna go to college." I didn't get to graduate from college, because the truth is that, and statistically, adult survivors of childhood sexual abuse have a hard time getting through school. And if you really want to put funding and you really want to support survivors, that is one area that is needed. Lulu and many other survivors and our coping mechanisms are often shunned, demoralized, disparaged, as opposed to seeing it as a cry for help, as a red flag that says, "Let's get some holistic approaches and figure out how we could help this child." No one ever asked me why I was so angry. No one ever asked me if I felt safe. No one ever asked me if I needed anything. Those are simple questions that every child, especially Black children, should be asked. No one asked me. This is how white supremacy and patriarchy dehumanizes many survivors, especially Black survivors and other survivors at the intersections of race, sexual orientation, disability, gender identity, and for those of us who are undocumented. Our communities need deep and long-term investments in repairing such harm, especially given the legacy of over 400 years of enslavement and the sexual exploitation of Black and Indigenous communities if we are to ever heal as a nation. Surveys show that 95% of women behind bars are survivors of trauma, including child sexual abuse. Surveys also show that prison staff perpetrate more sexual harm rather than ever prevented. And worst of all, the Federal Prison Rape Elimination Act that we know as PRIA has failed us and is failing to protect and preserve the confidentiality and the privacy that every survivor deserves, regardless of whether they are being held in prison or not. Just last month, the New York State Focus published "The Brutal Sexual Assault of Robert Adams: A Person Being Held at a Correctional Facility Just Less Than Two Hours From Here in Ulster County." Prison staff committed such abuse and then is enabling, and is continuing to enable further abuse by covering it up. As I come to a close, after decades of prison, Lulu became the first woman to die of COVID. That was a death sentence that could have been, could have been stopped and prevented if we had parole justice. But Lulu's passing is not in vain, because not in Lulu's name or my name are you going to use our survivor experiences or our victim pain to put us up against other victims and other survivors' pain to justify a racist institutional system that continues to hoard Black and Brown bodies until they die in prison. We must pass parole justice reforms, specifically the elder parole and the fair and timely parole, to ensure that people have meaningful pathways to release consideration for all survivors of trauma and abuse. Thank you.
Alice, when you're ready.
Thank you, Senators, for having me. I also want to acknowledge and say what an honor it is to share this space with my fellow panelists who shared their stories. My name is Alice Hamlet, and I work at Common Justice, a New York City-based nonprofit. I'm here today to testify in favor of both bills. At Common Justice, we use restorative justice practices to serve both survivors of harm and people who cause harm. We know that survivors' experiences and beliefs are highly individualized, but that the vast majority of survivors share a common goal, and that's safety. Prevailing narratives tell us that the only way to achieve safety following harm is through extensive incarceration. The voices of survivors themselves often tell a different story. The Alliance for Safety and Justice has found that, by a two-to-one margin, survivors prefer that the criminal justice system be centered more on rehabilitation than on punishment, and that investments must be made in community supervision rather than in prisons and jails. Even if survivors do seek incarceration, there is no evidence that the length of a sentence reduces the symptoms and pain that survivors experience because of harm. Long sentences are also widely understood to be an ineffective mechanism of crime prevention. Despite the overwhelming evidence that extensive prison sentences do not produce safety, the very thing that survivors want, thousands of incarcerated New Yorkers have no pathway to release because parole is largely based on something they cannot change, their original offense. New York State's parole system is also racially inequitable. A 2020 investigation revealed that the parole board is significantly less likely to release Black and Latinx people than white people. So what can be done? Lawmakers must pass the fair and timely and elder parole bills. Respectively, these bills could change the standard of parole release to consider more substantially people's achievements whilst incarcerated, and would allow older adults who have served at least 15 consecutive years of their sentence to be eligible for parole consideration. These bills are survivor-centered and would help foster safety in communities across the state. For many who are incarcerated, the possibility of parole incentivizes transformation, like behavioral shifts, self-reflection, and the pursuit of education. For many survivors, these positive changes are more impactful and contribute more to safety and healing than continued incarceration. In addition, the four core drivers of violence, shame, isolation, exposure to violence, and an inability to meet one's economic needs, are fostered in prisons. Parole, instead, allows people who have been incarcerated to reconnect with and to contribute financially to their families, resulting in the reduction of violence and the strengthening of communities. These bills are not a threat to the safety of survivors. Instead, they provide survivors with the option to heal via the betterment of those who have harmed them, and for communities to welcome back those who have caused harm as assets, leaders, and contributors. Passing both bills will create a parole system that is more focused on who someone has become rather than who they once were. With these bills will come stronger neighborhoods, meaningful paths forward for survivors of violence, and the reduction of racial inequities. Survivors want safety. If we push past prisons' broken promise to produce safety and recognize that, for many survivors, safety means the rehabilitation and the release of the person who harmed them, we arrive at a key part of the solution to the problems of both violence and over-incarceration: parole reform. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to begin by saying to each and every one of you who has your own unique respective experiences, I am deeply sorry for your loss, and I cannot imagine your pain. I cannot. And I know that you did not have to come here today and subject yourselves to talking about these difficult, extremely difficult experiences. And yet, you did, and I thank you for that. You do not owe it to any of us, myself included, to answer our questions or to relive the trauma that you have endured and the violence that has impacted you and your families. So please know that as we ask you questions. And I want to encourage you to speak about your experiences in addition to questions we may ask, and feel free not to answer questions that you're not comfortable answering. Any questions immediately?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all, and you all have significantly interesting and sad stories, even though you may have divergent views of these two bills that are before us. And a lot of the comments seem to be focused on victim services or the lack thereof and funding, and I think that's something that we certainly, you know, as committee members, need to focus on in the future. But I'll ask just specifically regarding these bills, and you may have heard me ask some of the previous panels, I'd like to get your takes, possibly, and I think Teresa, I certainly know her, sadly, her son was killed in my district, I'm very familiar with her case. But, you know, the three of you, what is your position on exceptions, if any, to the rule? Because I think we all, you all know, having experienced in various ways, being a victim of a crime, whether it's someone close to you or yourselves individually, and, you know, the parole process for someone, and I know I keep using this example, and I know it's somewhat anecdotal, but Colin Ferguson, you have, how many people were killed? I think six, and 19 more wounded? He would be eligible for parole tomorrow if this case became, if the elder parole bill became law today. So that's something that is not carved out. And of course, and as the commissioner mentioned earlier, you know, it would be pretty bananas to let him go. But under fair and timely, there are also varying weights that you'd have to give to any programs that he took. But the bottom line is, it might just be every two years, it comes up as a matter of course, and he gets rejected until the day he dies. I get it. But that has a significant impact on victims, and I just want to see how you would reconcile that, if you have any comments in that regard, that this shouldn't necessarily be considered an absolute bill for every possible case, or maybe just nonviolent crime, whatever you'd like to offer, if anything, in that regard. I'd be very interested to hear it. Shaniqua, yes?
I would like to say, it would have to be a case-by-case basis. Colin Ferguson, no.
Right. I mean, it's an easy one.
Unless he was 90, you know, in like, in a wheelchair and can't move, or uses his trigger finger, like, yeah, no. It would have to be a case-by-case basis. You would just, I mean, it's a panel for a reason, you know? When you do parole, it's a panel. So each one of people, each one of the individuals on the panel plays a role in the decision-making.
But I guess my question is, though, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm just thinking, my question, though, is should they even have the opportunity for a parole hearing in serial, for a serial killer?
They should be heard.
They should be heard.
It should be a case-by-case basis.
Understood. So you feel there should not be an exception? Okay.
I mean, yes. I'm sorry. It should be an exception. Like, it depends on the case. Like, I think it should just be a case-by-case basis. That's the way I see it. Colin Ferguson, no. But then there would be my father-in-law, who just had a nonviolent crime. my father-in-law, who just had a nonviolent crime, but he just kept committing robberies, like, no one was ever hurt, but he's 63 years old, he don't get to see the parole board to 2029. So in a case like that, then you would be like, you know, okay, but Colin Ferguson, no.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
I'm going to speak to you from my experience, as well as someone who's been a longtime advocate to end child sex abuse and sexual violence, because not only am I a survivor, but I devoted my life for the last 30 years to ending child sexual abuse and sexual violence, primarily as it pertains to Black and Brown communities. The thing about crime and violence that we rarely ever talk about is that it really destroys and takes away the humanity of the person who experiences the crime. It tries to steal at our sense of humanity, right? It tries to distort that. And so as a child, I was really, really angry. Was angry with the world, I was angry with my family, my community, so much so that I was suicidal, so much so that I couldn't do enough drugs to take away the pain. What I come to realize, before I get to what I come to realize, what I know about child sexual abuse is that 90% of survivors of child sexual abuse know they're the person who sexually harmed them. So it isn't like the scare tactic of a boogeyman somewhere hiding. It's the priests, the pastors, the politicians, the teachers, our uncles, our aunts, right? It's people that have access to us. And that when we experience a crime as such a betrayal that uses our bodies against our own autonomy, it seals at the very core of who we are and how we see the world. And for many of us, we make our lives as survivors to not focus on what society thinks justice is, right? Everything tells us that you get justice in a courtroom. Everything tells us that you get justice by someone being behind bars. But I'm here to tell you that doesn't end the nightmares or the in-the-middle-of-the-night sweats or the triggers that I have to experience or the reason why I have to sit here with my African tools to keep me present so I don't disassociate from who I am, right? And those are the things that I'm able to talk to you out loud because there's a lot of other demons inside of so many of us who experience pain at such a young age. But what I'm trying to get to and get across to you is that I fought to get my humanity back and my sense of love of people and my sense of love of hope for a world where we could all live free of violence. I fought for that. I fought for that in Western notions of one-on-one therapy with a therapist. I fought for that by going back to my Puerto Rican, African traditions of spirituality, of what we knew was right for harmony in a world that justifies enslavement and the kidnapping of people, which we have a strong legacy of that in this country. And so I do think that everyone who commits such harm should have a fair and just access to parole justice. Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to ask, Lucy, you had mentioned in your testimony one area of support that is sorely needed for survivors is support to pursue education. And I wanted to ask each of you, if you'd like to speak to it, what you feel is most important and urgent to help crime victims and survivors heal? Or what is important, it doesn't need to be most important necessarily?
I don't want to take over, so I certainly will defer to other folks. Did you want to say something?
What is important to allow us to heal? I don't know really how you can heal from something like this. Losing a child and then to murder is the most stressful thing any human being can ever go through. The PTSD, I'm afraid to leave my home. I'm constantly afraid that my only child, remaining child, is going to be harmed in some way. I'm in therapy two times a week. It's really, it is unimaginable. It really, it truly is. And until it happens to you, you don't understand the impact that it has. Not only for me, my husband, my remaining son, it's a ripple effect, extended family members. David's absence is palpable. He's gone, never coming back. And I think also the individual that decided to take his life that day, and the why I use the word evil is because he is. After he shot my son and he fled in the car with his two associates, they were in the car laughing, high-fiving, celebrating, mocking him, holding their stomach, pretending to be him. I mean, that is a complete disregard for human life. So I don't know if someone who shows no remorse really should ever be released back into society. He's showing who he is. When I heard that during the trial, that was, that was one of the most horrific things, to think that they were making fun of him and laughing as he was bleeding to death. And I just also wanted to reiterate on the second chances. He did have a second chance to right his first wrong. He was on probation when he killed my son. It was less than a year earlier, he had stabbed someone. He was, so he could have turned his life around and he chose not to. So taking all these things into consideration, the healing process is difficult and we're all trying the best we can.
I can only speak for me and my family. The best healing that we've, the best thing, way that we use to heal is helping other people. You know, like, if I could help another family not go through what my family is going through, that's healing for me. Like she said, there's no real way to really heal or there's no, oh, it's going to be better, or, oh, you could get past it, or, you know, how many years, it still feel like yesterday. So what I've found out in my life is helping other people not go through, being more proactive in my community. In our communities, we know who's who. We know who's doing what. So just be more proactive in saying what she said earlier, how are you doing? How can I help you? What's going on? Tell me what's up. So I've been doing that and it's helped a lot. And in that situation with this young man that Ms. Bliss just said, talked about, he had a chance before he stabbed someone else. I'm working with agencies and systems right now where it's a full circle. So anytime a participant or a young person get into trouble, we act as a circle. So if we get more funding to do this work, I would have been that person that came to the probation officer when that young man first got in trouble. And I would have worked with the probation officer to get him some real help. He would have never been able to do that to her son. You understand? So that's what I'm working with right now and I think funding organizations like mine to have and create that circle with all the systems, probation, parole, HRA, ACS, you know, all the systems, police, legal aid, I do all that and I do it for free. I do, there's no funding, you know? So I've been proactive and changing a lot of people's lives. If we just put more money into helping people like myself create those circles for when they first get in trouble or do it with them before they even get in trouble, because I'm in the schools. So when I'm in the schools, I ask the teachers, who gives you the most problems? Send them to me. You understand? They might not have committed a crime yet, but they have the potential to commit a crime or do something crazy in school. So if I stopped it at school, they won't make it to Rikers Island when I'm talking to a 14-year-old person who told me he just stabbed three people. He won't be that person. He won't be that person that took her son. Once he get to probation, I'm on it. We on it at the precinct when they get locked up. I get legal representation for them soon as they arrested, legal aid steps in. After that, they go to court, if they go to court. We're talking to the DA's office like it's a circle. All right, he go to parole or probation, I mean, not parole, probation. I'm on it with the probation officer. How we stop this? So I think it should be more money in helping organizations like mine. And in my healing, that helps me heal, helping other families. So there won't be no more mothers sitting here on this panel. That's what I do. And in helping him, the person who perpetrated my sister, he gets to help other people. He gets to stop that cycle by saying, listen, that was me. I used to be that person. Nah, do this. Talk to Ms. Purvis. You understand? And then, wait, my probation officer, he was cool. He know her too. We work resources. You don't got your ID, we can get that. You don't need your birth certificate, I got that. Call and get it the same day. You understand what I'm saying? Like, it's a circle and it just needs to be more funding for programs like mine to create that circle so we won't have this panel.
I would say to that, that I can't speak as if I'm the only survivor, adult survivor of child sex abuse who feels the way I do. I represent a vibrant group of adult survivors from every walk of life and race and gender identity across this country, developing some of the amazing effective programs. From Andrea Ritchie, who is an attorney, works out of Columbia University and is doing a lot around police sexual violence, to Maryam Kaba, who is a study, who's also a survivor, doing a lot around transformative justice circles and accountability outside of the criminal justice system, to the Bay Area transformative justice process that Mia Mingus is doing, who's also a survivor out in Cali, in the Oakland area. Is transformative justice and restorative justice processes allow us to take a look at the deep root of what violence can do to a society. It's not just responding to it when it happens. By the time they get to her program, it's too late sometimes. And so why not address it at the very onset? If someone had circled around me when I used to beat up girls and rob people, I probably would have gotten a bachelor's degree in something, right? Like, I probably would have been a whole lot better of a person. I love who I am today, but I had to fight for that. I had to look beyond this idea of punishment, of punishing my own brother, of punishing people in my own community as if that was going to bring me a resolve of some kind. It never will. I live with PTSD every day. I took my meds last night. I did all types of prayers so I could stand here and be heard and be as clear as possible. But if we're only responding to violence, then we're not getting above it. We have to go underneath that. Young people are showing us every single day. I was showing my teachers, I was showing my own family, I was showing my own community, every day that there was something wrong. And every day, they dismissed it to, she's just a little Black girl from Harlem who's poor and her mom is a single mom, and that's how those kids are. And that's how white supremacy and patriarchy seeps in and judges us. And then next thing I know, I'm Lulu. Do you understand that? Do you hear that? My friend told me not to ask you if you understand that, but I need you to hear that and see it. When we are victims of crime, we are not seen as that. We are seen when we cope by doing drugs or dropping out of school or getting abortions or going into sex work as if we are criminals and just reckless people who are just violent, and we are not. But when you're introduced to violence at a very young age, that is what you respond with. And when you lock us up and put us in prison and just isolate us, it kills us even further. And you don't have rehabilitation programs. Y'all need to stop talking about it like you do. You don't have rehabilitation programs. Even your sex offender management programs are not even effective and they're a waste of money. They don't even work for white people who commit crimes. And so, and it's the same for crime victims, crime victims programs. They don't even work for white survivors. And so if we really want to have a conversation about how do you end violence, then you've got to get at the root cause. And I can tell you from one of my friends who's a mitigation specialist, every time she interviews a person who is behind bars and their family, she finds that that child, in that person's childhood, they experienced violence. And so what second chance are they going to get? One of the things that you said earlier, Senator Holman, is you wanted to talk about the 750 women who've been sexually assaulted in prisons. Well, men are also sexually assaulted in prison. And so could you imagine going somewhere that says they're going to rehabilitate you and the guards and the correctional officers are sexually abusing you and then you're expected to come out and be a good person? That's not rehabilitation. You have people behind bars that aren't even supposed to be there from the beginning. We haven't even talked about people who have developmental disabilities that are being held. And so if you really want to talk to me and find out what the root cause is, get at what is impacting us as children and put resources into addressing that from a humane and cultural perspective. Not just from this idea of trauma-informed care or that was an analysis that was driven up by an HMO that only, only surveyed white, middle-class people who had health insurance. And so now we have an ACE study, right? And so if we want to get at the core, that's what it is. And I believe parole justice gets at that core. It's not like you're going to open up the doors and they're all going to run out. You have a process. You have a process that you have failed to stick to, that you have failed to follow. And these two bills are just putting in safety nets to ensure that you follow it to its core. You have an obligation as a government to ensure that everyone has equal access to a right to life and freedom. They served their time. You all said it better than I did. And so we're not asking you to open up the doors and let everybody out. Every person that is in there goes before the parole board. And what we're saying to you is, it's not fair as it is already. You heard stories earlier from formerly incarcerated people that they went before it 10 times, eight times, and then you have stories like Lulu, that they never got a chance after they rebuild their lives and they died. I'm sorry, but I'm not going to live in a world that creates me, that forces me to have a cognitive dissonance between the people that hurt me and my own hurt. I'm not going to do that because that makes me just as much an animal as we're saying that they are. I'm not doing that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I just wanted to note the concern that we've had in this legislature around adult survivors of child sexual abuse, you know, the two-year retroactive window that we passed and has allowed over 10,000 adult survivors to file civil claims against their abusers of the institutions that may have protected them, as well as the Adult Survivors Act, which has resulted in at least 750 cases by women who were formerly incarcerated and probably many more, including men. So thank you for making that distinction, which is so important, and I really appreciate your words. I wanted, again, to echo what my colleague Senator Salazar said about the pain that each of you share and frankly, our inability to fully comprehend it and my deepest respect for your presence here today and for your families. And I wanted to ask Alice about your figure here of ninety percent of survivors who approach, who approached by organization, choose restorative justice options without to pursue accountability, as Teresa put a very fine point on. Yet, without incarceration. Without incarceration. What does that look like? Like practically speaking? Could you describe that program?
Sure. So Common Justice is actually the first program in the country, alternative to incarceration and victim- There we go. Okay. Okay, there we go. Common Justice is actually the first alternative to incarceration and victim service program in the country that addresses violent felonies in adult courts. And what we do is, once we receive referrals and go through DA's offices in Brooklyn and the Bronx, we approach survivors whose cases are eligible and ask them if, first of all, if they want services from us. And a lot of them say yes. And whether or not we provide them services is not contingent upon whether or not they choose to move forward with our restorative justice program and these services are for life. But we also ask them if they would like to use our program, restorative justice program, as a way to resolve their case. Ninety percent of people say yes. It's not because it is all sunshine and rainbows and everyone is so altruistic. It's because, as a program, we have found that survivors are pragmatic and they don't want what happened to them to happen to them again, and they don't want it to happen to other people. And many of them, the vast majority of them, come from communities where if incarceration worked at creating safer communities, they would know by now. So they proceed with the program. What happens is the person who harmed them, the defendant in the cases, but we call them responsible parties, they engage in alternative to incarceration programming. This involves helping them get support in a wide variety of different facets of their life. But it also involves with extensive preparation, participation in a restorative justice circle. So the person who caused harm, as well as supports from our program, and the person who was harmed, the victim or survivor or a proxy, get to sit together and talk about the impact of the harm on their lives. And the survivor gets to name community agreements that they want the responsible party to follow in order to finish, resolve out their case. These could look like, you assaulted me on a bus and for that reason, I couldn't take the bus for six months. I need you to not take the bus for six months, you know how that felt. Or, I think the fact that you were unemployed had to do with the fact that you robbed me. I want you to get a job and I want you to get a support with your resume, career building. This is how responsible parties in our model do sorry. It's how accountability is imagined by the person who was harmed. And that's really important to their healing processes, we find. And I think circling back to Senator Salazar's question regarding what survivors need. I'm not a survivor myself, but I'm from an organization, I'm representing an organization that has served over three hundred survivors. And what we do not have for survivors is options that go beyond the punitive and frankly, disgusting nature of prisons and jails.
So where is the district attorney or law enforcement in this equation?
Sure. So the cases that come to us, folks have already been arrested, indicted, and the cases are, you know, seen by the DA's offices. We are in communication with them and they get referred to us. They go through sort of a referral process. Other folks can refer the cases to us as well.
So the DA basically signs off on the-
Yes, all parties involved in the criminal ecosystem have to sign off. So the sense, just like another alternative to incarceration program, there are a lot of them that operate in the city. You know, the person who committed harm also has to agree that they want to resolve their case this way. Their defense attorney has to be on board, representing them, the DA or ADA in the case, and the person who was harmed.
And could you just make the connection again between your successful program, at least from the standpoint of ninety percent of your clients, and parole reform and justice? Specifically, the legislation that we're discussing today?
Sure. And I said this in my testimony, but survivors are not a monolith. Many want different things. But largely, they want safety, which is what our program tells us, right? With this ninety percent participation rate from the people we approach. Prisons and over incarceration doesn't produce the safety that we think it does. What does produce safety is access to resources, whether that be inside, through pursuit of education or opportunities, limited though they are in prisons, as well as being able to reconnect with one's community and receive that support on the outside, which is why parole justice and these bills make sense in terms of fostering community safety and meeting the needs of survivors.
Thank you.
Just a very quick clarifying question, Alice. Is the program also available not only as an alternative to incarceration, but also for individuals who are formerly incarcerated?
So that's not necessarily a role that our program fills. It doesn't mean that that role isn't important. We have our lane, but we really respect the work that other folks are doing to employ restorative justice practices at other points in criminal legal system contact.
Thank you. Yeah, I can see how critically important and unique the work that Common Justice does. So, thank you. So Lea member Anderson?
Thank you so much, Chairwoman. And thank you to all the brave women who took a moment today to share their stories about how violence has impacted them and has just significantly changed your lives. My question was specifically, and I can ask the entire panel this question as it relates to victim services. There was a mention, what's on this page? There was a mention of the inadequate supports for victims through victim services. So running the gamut and just hearing from each one of you all, whoever feels most comfortable commenting, what are ways that the state can continue to support those who are victims long after the incident has taken place? So in my district, I know of individuals who might have experienced gun violence and might have lost a loved one. And after the burial costs, the state pulls back. What are other ways that the state or now the entities can continue to be supportive?
Well, they could start by, once the incident happened. What we do, like, two days ago, a young man was killed in Marcy Projects in Veston, Brooklyn. So my kids were actually, you know, friends of his. So you go to the parents, go to the parents, figure out the story, go to the street. We outside, we find out what's going on. And in some instances, the crime happens inside the apartment. There's nothing to help these people that are going through this trauma clean their apartments. They are leaving it to the tenant who just was traumatized to clean their apartments. I had to go to a young lady who, mom was killed, a murder-suicide in her apartment. And I asked her, you know, whatever, I'm here to give you my services. And she says, I need you to help me clean up. And I'm like, okay, you know, we'll come help you clean up. And I go in the kitchen and I'm seeing brain matter. I'm seeing blood thick as someone's liver in her whole entire kitchen. The apartment was cleared by the precinct. It's no longer a crime scene. And they just leave it up to a twenty-year-old who has to take care of eleven-year-old and her two-year-old now, because her mom was just murdered in front of them. We help her clean her apartment. And then we say, let's try to find someone, you know, professional that could come in here. And they tell us, we committed a crime by helping her clean her apartment.
I'm sorry, who told you that?
The cleaning company that we call. They said that we wasn't supposed to touch anything. Like, we can contaminate ourselves, we can contaminate the people that stay there, we can contaminate. It was a whole big thing. And the management of the building wouldn't even give us a mop. We had to go across the street to the ninety-nine cent store and buy mops and pails because the management wouldn't help clean up. So we need to start with that. Like, with things that, when it actually happens. You know, because all of that is not even addressed. You know, we looking at, the situation happened, the person did it, here's the perpetrator, here's the victim. Helped, I helped in a lot of instances, you know, grieving services and I helped the family bury the person. I helped them get the crime victim services that they need. If they don't have somebody like me, they don't have the education of doing that. They don't know that it's up to six thousand dollars they could get for homicide for their child. A lot of people don't know that. I just, I make mention of it and any family that call me, I just make sure they get it because that's what I do. But every, I'm not everywhere. So education with that. Then on top of that, depending on if the crime happened inside the apartment. If it's a NYCHA development or even a private HUD, Section Eight, they leave it up to the tenant to clean the apartment.
So, but just to be clear, Shaniqua, if, and you've, you mentioned you've worked with Office of Victim Services before. You've worked with that agency. Just to be clear, there's no formal mechanism to submit for reimbursement, to submit-
No. You are entitled for, all right, so victim services as far as funeral services, there is something in place. That's crime victims. And they will pay up to six thousand dollars reimbursement if you pay out. Or the, I worked it out where the funeral homes already know about this. So they usually front it, you know, and then they get reimbursed. The funeral homes, they get reimbursed later, you know, so they won't traumatize the family even longer or keep the body in the morgue and, you know, things of that nature. So I worked that out. But as far as what if the crime is committed inside the apartment?
Private property, public-
You have a mother, her son was killed in front of her door. She had two sons killed in front of her door. Two years apart in Lafayette Gardens. She had to clean that crime scene in front of her door twice. Twice. Maybe we could start with that. And then we could talk about, you know, how we help them long-term. Because when you have to do that as a mother and you have to clean the crime scene. I had to clean the crime scene of my sister. I had to clean the crime scene. I had to clean the crime scene of my two friends. He killed his girlfriend and killed himself in front of his two-year-old. Had to clean that crime scene with my mother. In the same apartment building, it is so crazy, of the other lady, five years apart. Had to clean both crime scenes. There's nothing in place for that. So when you have something as traumatizing as that happening to our people and then you expect them to go on as, like, everything is okay, I'm fine. It's unacceptable.
Can I just ask a follow-up question before anyone else from the panel wants to answer? I'm sorry, Chairwoman. For the Public Housing Authority or any other entity, there was no services when you reached out to them for support?
None.
And the Violence Against Women Act, as well as other crime victims acts, requires public housing to provide support and services. And so I'm gonna put my crime victim hat on. In terms of crime, in the same way that systems are racist and rooted in white supremacy, so are crime victim services and how we approach crimes. So across the state of New York, we have over eighty rape crisis centers in every corner of every county, domestic violence shelters, transitional housing that works with HUD and other formats. But for gun violence and gang violence, there's a huge racial disparity as to how the government responds to those crimes.
That's right.
It's almost like the pit bull. The pit bull is like, you know, us and black and brown people, when we look at animals and we think of them as like the worst, right? And so gun violence and gang violence, the crime victim compensation will have you go through every barrier in order to access what you just heard the sister say. But if I'm a victim like I am of child sexual abuse or rape, rape crisis centers comes right in, tells me what I have access to in terms of crime victims compensation, connects me to services. And that is if, that is if I'm sort of like a white mainstream kind of middle-class person, right? And if I provide, and if I disclose.
But is that proactive?
Yes. They'll meet you in the ER. Right? So if I present to the ER and I tell the registrar that I am a rape survivor, they will automatically call the forensic nurse examiner, which we have across the state of New York. And I will be waiting in a private room until they come. They will do a rape analysis, like the rape kit, which is the forensic evidence collection. And they will automatically connect me with crime victims compensation. When you are a victim of gun violence, you go into the hospital, the hospital shuts down and not even the family is allowed to come into the hospital. There's no victim advocate that comes to help you. And there's no victim compensation that you get linked to. And that happens across this state and across the country. The same goes for gang violence. And if you are a victim of gun violence and you are killed and you had a felony, you can't even access crime victim compensation or it depends on what county you're from. Do you understand? So it's really, there's a discrepancy as to who the person is that is the victim of the crime and what kind of crime it is.
I had to become, I'm sorry. I had to become a chaplain. I had to become a chaplain in order to get into the hospital to see these victims. Because if you wasn't family, and even with the family, it was limited. At first, it was COVID, but let's talk about before COVID. This has been going on. So after COVID, I just, during COVID, I did a lot of personal development. But in looking into it, I became a chaplain. That way, you can't tell me I can't come into the hospital. You can't tell me I can't see this victim. So I had to maneuver and come up with different ways to service my community.
Yeah, you state, you summed everything up, I mean perfectly. I was not even, the hospital didn't even call me. I didn't even have a chance to say goodbye to my son. We had no idea where his body was. Thank you. I called all the hospitals, left my name and number. Then I come to find out during the trial, detective sat next to his body for hours. No one thought to call me, his mother. Do you know what that does to me now? I never got a chance. I mean, the next time I saw him was him laying in a casket. And I think, I think, yeah, that was difficult. I think also, the state allows six thousand dollars for funeral expense. That needs to be doubled. I mean, we're, six thousand dollars for a funeral? When, twenty years ago? I mean, I can tell you, it's a lot more than six thousand dollars. And we are going through enough stress and trauma. We don't need to worry about money. And my funeral home wouldn't even allow us to, they wanted the money upfront. So they wouldn't even work with us. Another thing, a, a lot of times, the victims' families are not appointed an advocate until they get to the court system. Well, what happens when the perpetrators are never caught? They're left alone to handle, navigate things on their own? Liaison and advocates should be implemented at the inception of the crime. There's another reason why. My son's name was released on the news within an hour and a half. That's how I found out he died. I mean, I knew he was shot because my younger son was with him. We assumed he was going to the hospital. Then I didn't know if he was, his body was laying there or not removed. I had, we had no idea. No one communicated with us, nothing. So for me to find out how he died was on a Patch article. And I'm sitting in front of my local precinct, because I showed up there looking for answers. And they told me to go back and sit in my car. No one came out. Sit in your car, detective will be here to come talk to you. I go back in my car, made the biggest mistake of going on my phone. And there I see, he's dead. I get out and I'm screaming. This is how, this is how we're told? I mean, I'm screaming at them. They wouldn't even let us back in and we just left. I didn't get a phone call then till three o'clock in the morning. Detective showed up at my house, ten AM the next morning. I mean, I understand they have an investigation to conduct. But someone needs to be implemented at the inception of the crime. I cannot bear the thought of another family finding out the way I did. It's a huge invasion of privacy. We should be told first. I don't know what happened. I don't know how that happened, but protocol was most definitely breached.
And that's why organizations like mine, organizations like Mena, SOS, Life Camp, Release the Grip. And that's why organizations like mine, organizations like Mano, SOS, Life Camp, um, Release the Grip. I could go on, and Kavi, who's actually in Kings County Hospital Station. So they, they would definitely have been on the scene, you know, for, um, parents like you. And if there was enough funding, they would probably have their organization in the hospital station.
So you sit on, this is the Judiciary Committee, right? So, um, the New York State Division of Criminal Justice has a pot of money um, called the culturally specific grant program and that is funding that should actually go to the many programs that, uh, you were talking about, very different from the funds that go to rape crisis centers and TV shelters because they're not responding. Many of them are crime victims programs, but they're not responding to gun violence and they're not responding to gang violence. But community-led black programs, community-led Latino programs, Asian programs, LGBT programs, they are actually responding and they should receive support.
Uh, I just want to say that it's two committees.
Oh, right.
Set this out as committee as well.
Yeah, exactly.
Sure.
Kuluus, that's really valuable information for all of us to know when, um, particularly as we approach a state budget process.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
I got justice in two thousand and five because I led the charge for the culturally specific funding and the reauthorization of the Violence Against Women Act because I didn't want anybody to experience what I experienced. I grew up in Harlem, right next to Metropolitan Hospital in Massana, and none of them ever reached out. There was nothing, how could you have nothing in East Harlem for a little Puerto Rican girl? And so the culturally specific program is a dear program to my heart. I walked and lobbied the halls and worked with Obama's administration and Biden to make sure that communities of color, and there was a great discussion on the floor around the needs of black women as it pertained to violence against women. And so, New York, I made sure New York got that money. But New York has to make sure that it is administrating it in the way that it was meant. Meaning the organization has to be designed, developed by and for the specific racial community that it's saying it's working for.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that, um, we do have to move on to the next panel. We have two more panels. But sincerely, thank you all so much for taking the time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Watching this, uh, being streamed, they said, "It's kind of amazing seeing survivors come together on what real solutions look like that don't have as much to do with long sentences and parole." So it was just, just an observation that I wanted to share. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next panel, um, includes Jared Trujillo from the NYCLU, Tom Bierper, Melissa Tanis, and if he is available, Ronald Dennis from Vocal New York.
Oh, no, thanks for staying so long. I appreciate it.
Is Ronald Dennis here? Okay. We'll go ahead and, um, and start with this panel. Are you ready, Jared?
Sure.
If you'd like.
So, uh, thank you senators, uh, for having this hearing and for inviting, uh, the NYCLU to testify. Um, I, I, I'll be brief, uh, because I don't want to reiterate, uh, all the really important points that people brought up before. Uh, but I do just want to talk briefly about how we got to this place that we're in now. How we got to this place where we have this epidemic of, of aging folks that are incarcerated. How we got to this epidemic of people dying by incarceration. So much of it has to do with our sentencing laws. You know, and I, I think that it, it's so pressing right now, um, as next year is the fifty-year anniversary of the Rockefeller drug laws, what our sentencing laws look like and how they were designed to make it so that we have this current epidemic. In, up until nineteen sixty-seven, New York only really had two, uh, mandatory, uh, mandatory minimums for two offenses, for murder and for first-degree kidnapping. Beginning in, uh, beginning of the late nineteen sixties and really taking off in nineteen seventy-three uh, with the passage of the Rockefeller drug laws, sentences got longer, uh, prison populations got blacker and browner. The ideas of rehabilitation within the carceral system and without the carceral system disappeared. This led to a disinvestment from communities, disinvestment from prison programs, disinvestment, uh, from programs that were actually structured to build people up, to make sure that they can survive safely in their communities. And instead of spending money there, we spent more and more money on incarcerating people. I also just want to briefly, uh, address a point that Senator Palumbo made before about the idea that when, uh, you grant parole to someone or when you make the system more equitable, it only matters to that one individual. We all know that that's not the case. Releasing someone, so we know that having an incarcerated parent makes a child much more likely to end up in the foster care system. Makes a child about three times more likely to end up in the juvenile carceral system. We know that it makes a child about six times more likely to end up in the adult carceral system. And we know that incarceration begets poverty, begets incarceration, begets more violence, begets poverty, begets more incarceration, begets all of these multi-generational cycles of incarceration and poverty that we see today. Elder parole and fair and timely parole are really just about giving a little bit more fairness to the system, about reducing some of those harms, about making sure that next Thanksgiving, that someone doesn't have to worry about their grandfather or their grandmother or their aunt or their father or their, or their sister, being incarcerated, being in an environment that is designed to traumatize people. They can be home, or at least they can have a, a fair chance to show that they've rehabilitated so that they can be home. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
I'm gonna get a little sign, so.
Oh, okay. I'll try to get you a, a name tag.
It's okay. Um, I'll just state my name. Um, thank you for allowing me to testify today. Uh, my name is Melissa Tanis. I'm the Policy and Communications Manager at the Center for Justice at Columbia University. The center was founded by two formerly incarcerated women who, upon coming home from prison, continued their advocacy and support, uh, for the women that they left behind in prison. And the center seeks to end mass incarceration and promote alternatives to safety and justice and support movements to end mass incarceration and criminalization through research, policy advocacy, education and public programming. Last year, the center wrote a report to highlight initial findings of the demographics of people who are dying behind bars in New York State prisons. And while every other age group has experienced a decline in deaths as the number of overall incarcerated population in New York State has gone down, people fifty-five and older are dying at a higher rate than ever before. And while it may seem obvious that the large majority of people dying behind bars are older, the stark upward trend is what is troubling. Older people have not always made up the majority of deaths or people behind bars or the majority of people incarcerated. Even in the eighties and nineties, when the total number of incarcerated people was more than double it is today, people fifty-five and older were not dying at this high of rate. In fact, in the nineteen eighties, people fifty-five and older made up nine percent of all deaths and in the most recent decade, they made up fifty-six percent. A similar upward trend was found in people serving fifteen or more years. We are working on updating this report with the data from the last few years of the pandemic and sadly anticipate similar devastating findings, if not worse. Increasingly excessive sentences, repeated parole denials and minimal clemency releases from our last two governors are lending to people staying behind bars for longer, thus increasing their chances of dying in prison without a meaningful opportunity for release. And in our recommendations, thank you, um, we outline how the elder parole and fair and timely parole bills will help to slow the number of deaths behind bars and interrupt the upward trend. Elder parole will give many people who otherwise would not have an opportunity for release outside of the lottery that is the current New York State clemency system, um, a chance at parole. And fair and timely parole, as many people have stated, would ensure that people are assessed for who they are today. Uh, these two bills will remove barriers to a process that is meant to allow for the release of people who have served their time, but instead has turned into a system of resentencing and perpetual punishment. On a personal note, I am a survivor of crime and my dad also died in prison, meaning I am also a survivor of the crime of state violence. My dad was denied clemency parole and unable to even apply for compassionate release because of the nature of his crime. And this is why I believe so strongly in making sure the policy that is intended to reduce and prevent mass incarceration, long sentences and death behind bars does not exclude anyone based on the nature of their crime. Everyone deserves a chance to be seen, heard and understood for who they are today and every, and every person supporting an incarcerated loved one deserves to have real hope that their loved one will come home someday. Having to come to terms with the fact that my dad was going to die in prison instead at home with his family is something I hope no other family member ever has to go through. It is cruel and unnecessary and has a lasting impact on the family members who have to do, endure such disdainment for their loved ones simply because they are incarcerated. The number of deaths behind bars is not go, is going up and will continue to go up without intervention. As our report has shown, reducing the overall population, um, does not reduce the number of, uh, deaths in older people. Therefore, we have to focus policy specifically on this population. Older people are often left out of efforts to reduce the prison population and the result is too often death. The legislature has the opportunity this session to put policies into place that will interrupt this upward trend. If the legislature refuses to act and prioritize the life of people behind bars, another year will go by where hundreds of incarcerated New Yorkers will die in prison. The reality of this crisis is clear and so are the solutions. It is imperative that the legislature do what is necessary to save lives, reunite families and reduce the impact of a racist oppressive state system by passing the elder parole and fair and timely parole bills at the beginning of the session. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's fine, there you go. Hi, my name is Tom Bierper and I am the Director of Policy Advancement at the Partnership for the Public Good in Buffalo. Um, I would first like to thank Chairperson Salazar and Hojman and the respective committees for jointly holding today's hearing. New York State incarcerates people at a rate higher than the United Kingdom and Canada combined. In the past ten years, more people have died in state prisons than the total number of persons executed during the three hundred and sixty-four years New York officially practiced capital punishment. That's because we have a new death penalty, one that hides in plain sight and claims a life every three days, death by incarceration. Repeat parole denials can contribute to the spike in prison deaths, including our elders, as over one in two people who die in docs custody today are fifty-five and older. Upstate New York disproportionately represents the state's imprisoned population, sending the most people to prison per capita. Where I am living currently in the Buffalo area and in Buffalo specifically, our incarceration rate is over three times the rate in New York City. Three Buffalo neighborhoods account for only seven percent of the city's total population, yet represent almost twenty percent of the city's imprisoned population. And they're all on the east side of Buffalo, one of the blackest and most historically segregated and disinvested areas in the region. Neighborhoods in this area contend with higher rates of targeted policing that lead to disparities in arrests and a constant state of community surveillance. It's no surprise that Buffalo's communities with the highest imprisonment rates correlate with poverty and challenges in meeting basic needs. This requires an intentional investment in supportive services outside of the legal system to address root causes. Across the nation, black people experience incarceration almost five times higher than their white counterparts. In New York, black people make up fifteen percent of the state population and forty-eight percent of the prison population. Latinx individuals account for nineteen percent of New York's population and twenty-four percent of the prison population. Not only are there glaring disparities in who gets incarcerated, but also who gets released on parole. Between January twenty eighteen and January twenty twenty, the state released thirty-nine percent of people of color seeking parole, compared to forty-six percent of white people. Thousands more are or will become parole-eligible. Um, and yet current parole practices leave them with little to no hope as the parole board routinely denies freedom, um, based on the original crime and not, um, based on who the person is today, as many have explained. Lawmakers have an opportunity to right this wrong and heal families by passing elder parole and the fair and timely parole bills. Together, these parole justice measures will reunite families, improve community safety and save the state an estimated five hundred and twenty-two million annually. The parole process is not meant to determine an individual's readiness for, or the parole process, sorry, is, um, meant to determine an individual's readiness for release, not to relitigate a case. New York can no longer afford to do more of the same. The safest neighborhoods do not have the fullest jails or prisons. And so this legislative session needs to be the year for parole justice. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have, um, a couple of questions.
Sure. Um, I just have, uh, I really wanted to, uh, thank all of you, um, again for, um, for your testimony, traveling to Albany, uh, and, um, your, your perspectives. And I want to specifically thank, um, Ms. Tanis and the Columbia Center for Justice on the report that you issued, um, last year to, to highlight the initial findings of the demographics of people who are dying behind bars in New York State. And I was just wondering, in the academic community in which you work, how, how has this been received through other, um, uh, institutions or advocates or, um, uh, those who, those who work on these issues? It made a lot of, it got a lot of attention here in New York. I was just wondering, regionally or nationwide, um, did you get feedback on the report?
Can you hear me? Yeah. Um, yeah, uh, I think it was received well, um, within the academic community. I, we have connections, of course, across Columbia and people in the medical school that are interested in, um, just learning more about how prison affects, uh, people's bodies, uh, physiologically, physically, um, and this increase in death behind bars. Um, I think that hopefully whenever we have some more information that we've already requested to continue to update this report and just make it more robust to really understand what's going on behind bars, we can do some more, um, educational events and just getting the information out there so that people know, um, that this is happening. But I think everyone who read it was shocked and not shocked in that we knew that this was happening anecdotally. Uh, and at the same time, it's just incredibly sad to see, um, these numbers and how often people are dying, uh, in New York State prisons and how often we don't even hear their names.
What, what information, um, are we lacking to, to paint a fuller picture of what the, this, these, you know, these deaths represent?
I think, I mean, most urgently is probably COVID information just because, um, as we were monitoring it throughout, uh, the beginning of the pandemic, uh, it seemed like there would be months that would go by that we would not get any information from docs about, um, who was dying behind bars even though we knew that people were. Um, and so getting that information about how the, uh, pandemic has impacted it because, um, there was a large increase in deaths during the time of, um, the AIDS crisis in the eighties and nineties. And so we know that these health crises, um, have a huge impact on people who are incarcerated. And also the number of parole releases went down during the pandemic, during, during a time when they should have gone up. Uh, and clemencies were very rarely granted. Um, and our current governor is also not granting them either as of now. So we need, um, action to be taken while people are still, while the pandemic is still going on and while people are still dying behind bars.
Was it hard to secure this information from the Department of Corrections?
Um, so far I'm having a little bit of difficulty in that I asked for, I submitted the FOIL request back in March and keep getting extensions and still don't know. The next, uh, deadline is January, so it'll be almost a year if they give it to me then, but I'm anticipating it'll probably get pushed back again.
And that's a, a FOIL that you had to make?
Yeah.
So you had to go through a legal process in order to get information that is not publicly available?
No, not in the capacity of what I requested. Um, they have put out some reports and some of them have been, uh, rescinded and we're not quite sure where that information is now. Uh, so, yeah, just trying to figure out where to find this because some of it's public, some of it's not. Yeah.
Do you have suggestions for us as lawmakers to make this information more readily available? Is that something that you thought about or considered?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that a lot of this should be way more transparent than it is. Um, like I said, when we were looking at the, I was, I was closely monitoring the, um, they just had like a, a small grid of like who's died behind bars during COVID on their website. Um, and I was trying to monitor that and also compare that to what we were hearing from people inside. And like I said, for a while, it just stayed at the same number for a really long time. And I knew that that was, that could not be accurate, that there had to have been more people who were dying that they weren't telling us about. And it's also hard because, um, as happened during the AIDS epidemic, what they label an AIDS-related death or a COVID-related death, um, is hard. Uh, if they were not diagnosed with HIV at the time of death, then they couldn't have, um, labeled it as that even if they knew that that was the case. And so it's true with COVID that it's been, um, sort of a way to, I think, cover up some of the deaths that happened inside by saying, oh, well, they didn't test positive at the time of, um, of death, even if they had all of the COVID symptoms. Um, so it's gonna be hard to actually kind of know the accurate number. But I think a lot of that, of how they're actually documenting that, like, needs to be way more transparent than it is and more accessible to the public. than it is and more accessible to the public.
Well, that's really good information as we go into our budget hearings and have the opportunity to ask the Acting Commissioner about how transparent the entity is and how we can get information like this more readily available to the public and analysts like yourself. So thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. I'll start with a question for Jared. As you know, the two bills that are the subject of this hearing don't actually amend sentencing laws, even though they can have an impact on an individual's sentence, especially if they, when they were sentenced, were not given an opportunity for parole or a conditional release date. I'm curious what you think about how parole justice might be necessary in order for hopeful sentencing reform to be effective, or how you maybe see the relationship between parole reform and sentencing reform.
Sure. And so there are three incredibly important sentencing reform bills that are in front of the legislature now. Without going into details into all of them, S 7871, S, which is the Eliminate Mandatory Minimums Act, S 7872, which is the Second Look Act, and S 7873, which is the Earn Time Act. So all three of those bills do an incredibly -- sorry -- important job of really changing, just radically changing the sentencing system from the sentencing paradigm from the beginning. So ending mandatory minimums should reduce sentences. The Second Look Act should enable people to apply after serving a certain amount of time in a carceral facility to apply for a shorter sentence. And the Earn Time Act enables people to shorten their sentences by participating in vocational programming, educational programming, or doing treatment. However, these parole bills are incredibly important to addressing the epidemic of mass incarceration in New York as well. They work on the backend for sentencing. So, for as important as those sentencing reforms are, at the same time, there are so many elders that are today currently incarcerated. Even if the Eliminate Mandatory Minimums Act passes tomorrow, and some people's sentences are shorter because the Eliminated -- Eliminate, sorry, Mandatory Minimums Act passes, there will still be a lot of people that are sentenced to really harsh sentences. There will still be an immense amount of elders that are serving sentences that were meted out before these reforms could have passed. And so while those sentencing reform bills are incredibly important, these are also essential to reducing mass incarceration in New York. And the last thing I want to say about elder parole is that just -- and you brought this up beautifully, just the amount of seniors, the amount of aging folks that are in the carceral system only continues to increase. While the population of younger folks has decreased over the years, for seniors, it's only grown and grown and grown and grown and grown. I think that with some of these other sentencing reforms, we could hopefully reduce the amount of seniors in the future. However, we have to do something about the pain that communities are facing now. We have to do something about the seniors that are dying, whether it be from COVID, or monkeypox, or RSV, or any of these other ailments. We have to do something to help them now. We have to do something about the seniors that are just really dying from the mass medical neglect that's happening in carceral facilities now. And I think that elder parole and fair and timely are just so essential to doing that now, and also to setting up an infrastructure so that no matter what sentencing looks like in the future, when people do finally get to their parole date, they're actually given a fair chance to show their humanity so that they can be released.
Thank you. Yeah, it seems important that, consistent with exactly what you just said, even if we were to pass the three bills that you mentioned, sentencing reform tomorrow, it still underscores the importance of parole reform for when people do get to the parole board. Thank you. And this, for both Melissa and Tom Vier, thank you for your testimony. I am curious if you feel, both or either of you, if you would say that parole justice can potentially help families of responsible parties heal? So an individual who has, let's say, been convicted of a crime, whether, you know, the families of the individual? And additionally, if parole justice can even help survivors and victims' families heal through reconciliation, that is not really possible, or at least very, very difficult, while a responsible party is behind bars in the violent environment of a prison?
So I will speak from my own lived experience, that I am the loved one of a victim of violence, and I'm also a loved one of a perpetrator of violence. And so just growing up in Baltimore City, and somebody said this at the last panel, that if incarceration worked, then our communities would be safe. And no, there's nothing that can be done to bring my loved ones back. The previous woman who spoke on the panel about her sister losing her life during -- because of a stray bullet, that could have been my story, because I lost my friend who took my seat in a car when my mom said, "You can't get in the car and go out to your friend's house." And a stray bullet hit him, and I'm here today and he's not. And so thinking about not only redemption, but restoration for communities, I come from a community that is overpoliced, that's been extracted. Just even spending time on the east side of Buffalo, there's a lot of things that remind me of back home, and those people who are not only survivors and victims themselves, but also could be perpetrators, our loved ones of perpetrators. And so we know that this insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results, and that if we want to actually heal and address the trauma, we have to get to the root causes. And something that I've found that is extremely glaring is that many of these communities that have high imprisonment rates do not have access to basic needs. And crime is a symptom of poverty, and poverty is a policy choice. And so, at least for me, the parole reform bills would provide restoration. It would provide the healing. The community, we know the solutions that we need, we just need access to the resources, and we also need our loved ones' home. Because all it's doing is re-traumatizing those families, it's re-traumatizing the communities, it's costing so much. I mean, y'all know about the docs packaging ban, there's so many different layers. And so this is literally a matter of life and death, and we need to be a part of somebody's redemption story and repairing families today.
I'll also speak from my own experience. I would say absolutely parole justice will fight healing for families that have incarcerated loved ones. My dad went to prison when I was five years old. I did not have a relationship with him for 20 years. So when I reconnected with him 20 years later, I was able to see that he was a changed person, that after 20 years, he had transformed his life, that he had understood the depths of the harm that he had caused, not only to his direct victims, but to me as an indirect victim and to all of my siblings. And for me, there was an incredible amount of healing in getting to talk with him, getting to know him, getting to ask him questions, and even though I only got to know him for two and a half years, it changed my life. And I will say that not having parole justice in my case caused an immense amount of trauma for me. So not only will it provide healing for people, it will prevent future trauma of having to lose a loved one inside, or just the agony of not knowing if they're just going to continually be denied parole and end up dying in prison someday. That fear is constant when you have a loved one inside. And so the trauma that I've experienced just from not being able to have my dad home, not knowing what it was like to even have him home, and knowing that that's never, ever going to be an option for me, is something that I hope that we can help other family members avoid, and also mitigate the mental health and physical impact of experiencing something like that.
Thank you, Melissa. I don't have any additional questions. I know we need to move on to the next panel, but really appreciate all of you and your testimony today.
For the final panel, we're going to hear from legal advocates, who include Martha Rayner from Fordham Law. She could not make it. Kathy Manley, who's an attorney in private practice. Steve Zeidman, the famous Steve Zeidman. From the -- yes, a round of applause. From the CUNY Law Defense Clinic. And Susan Bryan, the famous Susan Bryan, from the New York State Defenders Association. So we'll hear from your testimony. This is our last panel, so if you want to give us the highlights of it, feel free. If you want to give us the long version, that's your prerogative. Thank you.
Thank you, senators. John McHenry got 25 years to life for a 1975 murder that was then denied parole 10 times. John had a perfect record during his 41 years in prison, and even started a victim awareness program in the prison where he brought in family members of those killed to speak to the prisoners. It was amazingly transformative until docs shut it down a few years later. John was actually a legend within the prison system. I represented him on two parole appeals, and we got the parole board held you contempt for denying release based only on the offense. But the state appealed, I eventually won, but John could not wait another year or two for that appeal to go through, and then faced the chance of yet another denial. In August 2016, he took his life in prison. John's death helps spur a few changes that led to some more people being released. His daughter spoke to the parole board and had some of the commissioners in tears. There were some new commissioners, like Ms. Shapiro, who we've heard from, and some new regulations. Release rates went up a bit for a while, and many of my clients got out. All of them are doing well.
Thought it was on. Oops. Well, I'm not going to start over. Anyway, it was still hit and miss at that point. Many courts allow people to be denied release based only on the nature of the crime, even when the sentencing judge said that the person should get out after serving the minimum term if they've done well in prison. So the parole board is allowed to resentence people to life without parole. And this year, in my experience, it's been worse than it's been at any point since 2017. For one thing, the parole board has come up with new ways to get around the regulations that went into place that were meant to force the board to look at how the person has done since that long ago offense. If the compass risk assessment shows a low risk of reoffense and the board denies release, they must explain why they are departing from that low-risk score. After getting reversed by courts several times because they claimed there was a reasonable probability of rearrest, but the compass said there was a low risk of rearrest, the parole board figured something out. Now, they often say that there is a low risk of rearrest, but they deny release anyway, based entirely or almost entirely on the nature of the offense. They claim they didn't depart from the compass, but they just denied release anyway. It totally defeats the purpose of the regulation, but they've been getting away with it. And sometimes, the board will claim that the person's remorse somehow didn't sound genuine enough to them, often even when the person breaks down in tears before them, talking about how much shame they feel at having taken someone's life so many years ago. And some of the things that the commissioners come up with in these hearings are kind of shocking. My client, Patrick, had been in prison for 30 years, and his record was so good, his remorse was so strong, and he was such a role model that the board was grasping at straws to deny him. So a commissioner asked him if maybe just having been in prison for 30 years had damaged him to the point where he was no longer okay to ever be released. They said this. And he recently lost his administrative appeal, and his appeal is pending in court right now. So the fair and timely parole bill would make it clear that release can't be denied just based on the long ago offense. For denial, the board must have to show, would have to show, that there's a current risk of reoffense. And the elder parole bill is probably the only chance someone like my client, James, has at ever being released. At the age of 18, he and some others were part of a horrible crime spree, including several robberies and a murder. Because of consecutive sentencing, James ended up with a sentence of well over 1,000 years, I think 1,700 years, and he'll never be eligible for parole. Yet now, over 40 years later, he's a completely different person and should at least be given a chance at release. Thank you.
I think this is working, right? Good afternoon, and I just want to start by thanking you both for your tireless advocacy and support, and hoping that today gets us a little closer to the finish line. You know, I have some prepared -- I think I can do this within three minutes, but I just want to address a couple of things that Senator Palumbo and Senator Tedesco said, just because I know there's a record. I mean, one thing that he -- Senator Palumbo mentioned several times, data from the Department of Justice, the 10-year study, and about recidivism rates, but what he failed to mention, and really, it's important to understand, is those rates -- he wasn't talking about people 55 or over and who have served 15 years. When you look at that data and you want to know the number, it's between slim and none. So it's disingenuous, and it needs to be clear on the record. The other thing is both Senator Palumbo and Tedesco talked about carve-outs. And I think it is, not that lawyers are the answer here, but, you know, the American Bar Association considered a very similar bill. And this is a statewide organization, these are judges, state and federal prosecutors, Wyoming, Texas, no carve-outs. Because when someone, there it was, what about the son of Sam? What about Colin Ferguson? The feeling was, you don't make law based on a straw man. You know, it's foolish. We all know, we're talking about affecting thousands and thousands of people. So anyway, that passed unanimously. So I think that's important for everyone to be aware of, that carve-outs are hardly necessary, hardly supported. I've been working for the past several years with students at CUNY Law School on behalf of hundreds of people serving life sentences, life and long-term sentences, and that entails filing clemency applications with the governor, but also helping people manage the parole system. And that's made abundantly clear the urgent need for passage of these bills. You've heard people say it over and over, it really is a matter of life and death. And I want to try and appeal to both humanity and logic with two specific examples. A woman came to my -- to the law school last month, I'm going to call her Ms. M., and she said to me, she wanted to talk about her son. So 30 years ago, when he was 25, he participated in a robbery gone terribly wrong. And that's an understatement, two people were killed. So this 25-year-old, and he was sentenced to 50 to life. Now, it's 30 years later, three decades, he's a 55-year-old man. He readily acknowledges his responsibility for the irreparable harm caused, he's racked with remorse, he's spent decades trying to grow and improve, he's a middle-aged, mature adult. And she, recognizing that he will be 75 when he's first eligible for parole, came and said, "Is there anything that can be done?" And I said to her, "There is not a single statutorily authorized thing that we can do." And that, to me, is exactly why we need the elder parole bill. With that bill, her son, having served well beyond 15 years, right? He's been in for 30. He's 55 years old, he would be eligible, at least have the chance to make his case. And what I really want to emphasize is, it's not unique. His situation isn't unique, both in terms of what he's done inside, but 50 to life is not unique. We're talking about sentencing reform before, and to appreciate who is impacted by this, I think you have to look back and understand the whole crisis of mass incarceration, which we have right here. You know, I was a public defender in the 80s and 90s, I know very well how tropes like Super Predator played out in our courts across this state, and what it resulted in. It just buried thousands, particularly young men of color, behind draconian sentences. And while I think finally, there's an agreement that we have a crisis of mass incarceration, virtually nothing is being done about it. Elder parole is one step to rectify. It really is, and I wish some of the others -- it's a moral imperative to undo the damage that has been done by the last 30 years. And a little bit more needs to be done. I just want to mention a couple of things about fair and timely parole. Again, through the prism of another person, one of the first people we ever worked with, Jackie, who's known to a bunch of folks here, he was sentenced to 25 to life. When we met him, he'd been in 44 years. He'd been denied parole over 10 times. And going through the board's decisions, all 10 of them, it was basically based on the seriousness nature of the crime, which was serious. And at first blush, and this, again, gets back to And at first blush, and this, again, gets back to questions about harm caused and whether to car, at first blush, seriousness, it makes sense, right? Serious things have more serious consequences. But the more you think about it, it was actually Jackie. He said to me, this is getting ready for his 11th interview. He said to me, "The crime was serious when it happened. It's serious today. It will be serious forever. Why should I go through this charade of a parole interview just to be denied again?" And I guess, I didn't have an answer for him. Because this is what keeps going on. This is why fair and timely parole is so critical, to stop the parole board from being able to do this. Otherwise, the whole parole process is a sham. It's a joke. The bill would focus the parole board on evaluating a person on their present risk of violating the law. And put another way, and this is just the last thing I'll add, it recognizes and values, as does, to the extent it moves anybody, the entire faith-based community, it recognizes and values the human potential for transformation and redemption. And it's about time for the Senate to do the same.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Senator Salazar and Senator Hoilman. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today. I'm Susan Bryant, the executive director of the New York State Defenders Association. And it's a privilege to talk from the perspective of the public defense community about the importance of these two bills. I do want to echo the language that we've heard from so many that have testified today about the need to change our system in many broader ways, the community supports, and putting our money where it makes a difference, and not in incarceration, for safety. But I want to talk just a few minutes about shifting the parole release standard, which fair and timely parole would do. Makes it possible for people to have a fair hearing. As others have said, you can't change the nature of your crime. But you can improve yourself. You can address what led you to being incarcerated. You can plan for your return to the community. Our sentencing structure, as it exists, which I disagree with, but that's another matter for another day, tells defendants and people who are incarcerated that they can have a chance at release after a period of incarceration. But when you go to the board every two years and get boilerplate decisions, it takes away your hope, not just for that person, but also for their family. And it's also traumatic to victims and their families as well. They go through this process along with people who are incarcerated every two years, and there is no predictability as to whether someone is going to be released. It's not rational. I don't even know why we need parole board commissioners if all we're going to do is just keep pressing the print button for decisions denying based on somebody's crime that they were convicted of. It doesn't make any sense. And besides that, talking about financial savings, we're dealing with, if you get denied, you have the right to counsel, which I completely support. But there's no rational way for a court to analyze any of this, because the standard is so amorphous. And it depends on where you are. It's a roll the dice as to where you are in the state, which parole commissioners you get. That makes no sense. There's no transparency. And it's trauma that doesn't result in anything positive for anyone, any of us in the community. These bills would change the system. More needs to be done, but it's a critical step. And I just want to speak about somebody that made a huge impact on my life, that worked for the Defenders Association, Jay Coleman. He's not an exceptional person. He is an example of somebody who spent 25 years in prison after he was sentenced as a persistent felon after a third-degree robbery at age 30. He came out at age 55. And soon, a few years later, he started working at my organization and ran a pre-entry mentoring program. People that had never been incarcerated were given an opportunity to understand what that process was like, and to go in with the thought of improving yourself, and what it means, and getting to the parole board, thinking that you actually have a chance if you have improved yourself. And sadly, Jay passed away in 2019 at age 69. We saw what incarceration did to his physical health and his mental health. Elder parole is critical. We are killing people behind bars. And Jay is just one of them. And Jay's contribution to a safer New York is one that I want to see more opportunities. He's just one example of so many that could be doing so much in these communities. So, I just want to thank you. I'm happy to talk about these bills. I'm happy to talk about public defense, other issues, criminal and family policing issues. But thank you for your advocacy in working on these bills. And I really hope this is the year that we see them pass.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for your testimony. I have a question particularly for Kathy, but certainly welcome any of you to answer this question. Kathy, you mentioned during your testimony that the parole board has been able to avoid, essentially avoid complying with regulations that are already in place. And I'm curious if you have any concerns about the parole commissioners somehow finding ways to avoid complying with the law if these bills were to become law?
Well, I'm sure they'll try, but the way that the law is worded is very helpful, because it says that not only does there have to be a current risk, which right now, they're saying there is no current risk of reoffense, but they're still denying release to get around the compass regulations. So, it says there has to be a current risk, and they have to show that with evidence before them. So, that is, it is a better standard, certainly, than what we have now. And sure, they'll try to get around it, but it'll be harder for them to do that, and easier to win in court challenging that.
Can I mention one other thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, just because one of the things that came up, especially in the last group, was about people who, the mortality rates. And one of the things people will say is, "Well, don't we have medical parole?" And I know this is not the place to go into all the many things that are wrong with the parole system. But as you may well know, medical parole, it's illusory. We've been working with a bunch of people who have passed away as they were in the process. But we should all ask ourselves if several hundred people are dying inside, whether it's, it shows the need for the elder parole bill, but also, how come some significant number of those folks weren't granted medical parole, also known as compassionate release? So, to the extent anybody says, "Why do we need this? There's medical parole." I'm just stating what I think you know. Medical parole exists in name only.
And I just want to contribute something that's in my written testimony, but I wanted to emphasize that I forgot to initially, which is, not only does incarceration impact the health of the individual who's incarcerated, but a recent study showed that family member incarceration was associated with lower well-being and lower projected life expectancy, with evidence of a disproportionate burden on Black family members. So, we are punishing not only the person that committed harm, but also their family, not only in mental and not having their family member with them, but also in terms of their own physical health. And I think that that's important to understand. And I know crime victims and their families are just as impacted by all of this. But having people incarcerated for decades at a time doesn't heal anyone.
And I think that's another, you know, area of potential study is the costs associated with family members' mental and physical well-being having their loved ones indefinitely behind bars. Steve, I wanted just to follow up with the medical parole. What are the parameters? If you could just, for the record...
The parameters?
For eligibility.
You know, it used to be, basically, you had to be terminal. But now, they've kind of expanded more to sort of a hospice definition. You know, can someone take care of the daily activities of life? You know, eating, cleaning, bathing, that sort of thing. And what we've discovered early on is bringing in our own independent medical evaluators, they're often quite at odds with what DOCS's own chief medical officer says. So, I'll just give you the best example I can possibly. It's a template denial. They basically say, "We got your request for medical parole. We don't think you qualify." And we have one particular case where, you know what the basis for the denial was? It said, "We've determined that you can still ambulate around the facility with a cane." That was the basis for denial. This person passed away two weeks later. We've gotten template denials where they cross out the name of the person seeking medical parole. So, really, I guess the short answer to the parameters is, we have to bring in independent medical evaluators. Because, I mean, think of it, the law says that a Department of Corrections staff, anybody, can request medical parole. So, where's the medical personnel inside of the prisons when people are dying? Shouldn't that be someone's obligation to say, "Hey, this person needs medical parole because they're near death"? It just doesn't happen. It's beyond cold.
Kathy, did you... I did have one case where the person was in the Fishkill Medical Unit, had severe dementia, couldn't remember the crime, couldn't remember anything, basically, not who his family members were, anything really. And he, the doctor at Fishkill, actually applied for medical parole for him.
Hallelujah.
And at one point, they denied it anyway because of the crime, which they're not supposed to do. So, I sued and got that reversed. And then, the parole board denied him, saying he didn't remember the crime. Eventually, he got out and died, like, about a year later, but at least he got out. But yeah, it's, no, there is no medical parole.
And if I could ask one other question, which is, the capacity of our parole board and attorneys and others to handle what would be, I would hope, a number of hearings to occur after we pass these bills? Are you confident in the ability for legal advocates to handle that new series of cases that hopefully you'll be handling?
I, well, I'll have, I'll say, for the public defense system, there's no right to counsel when you're being considered for parole. So, thankfully, programs like STEVE's and others have stepped up and filled a void, and people who can afford to hire an attorney to help them through this process. Certainly, a right to counsel in preparing for a parole board hearing, which is traumatic in itself. You're on a screen with a few commissioners asking you the most intimate questions